Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February 25th, 2025 Salinas City Council meeting. And I am calling the meeting to order right in front of your very eyes. Patty?
Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotunda.
And Zoom webinar participation is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. And with that, if everyone will please stand for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barajas?
Here.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Present.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Present.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Donahue?
I am here.
Thank you.
All right. Over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So before we get into the Levine Act disclosures, I want to make a couple of points regarding the two real property negotiations, closed session items council. To be clear, both for yourselves, the council, and for the public, item A is proposing negotiations for those two parking lots with Taylor Fresh Foods. So that would be the party with whom the city would be negotiating. And with respect to item B, there are several property owners with whom the city would be negotiating, and I need to list those off. Sui Sing Chamber Labor and Commission, Sui Sing Benevolent Association. Sui Sing Benevolent Association owns two properties, Rogelio Perez, Yales Rojas, Bing Kong Tong, the Chinese Freemasons, and the Sui Yip Association. Now, with respect to the Levine Act disclosures, do any members of the council have any campaign contributions to disclose related to any item on today's agenda, including the closed session? Councilmember Barajas?
I do. I received a contribution from Mr. Bruce Taylor in the amount of $5,500. That was returned earlier today, February 25th.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera?
I wish, but no.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Yes, I'll recuse myself from the city council's closed session discussion. Is this appropriate at this time?
Sure.
Okay. As it relates to the terms and sale of city-owned property lots 8 and 12 to Taylor Fresh Foods, I've done consulting work for Taylor Fresh Foods within the previous 12 months, for which I received compensation in excess of $10,000 and less than $100,000.
And then also, Councilmember De Arigo, any Levine Act disclosures that you need to make? I believe you also received a campaign contribution that you need to disclose.
Yes, I also received compensation of $5,500 towards my campaign from Taylor Fresh Foods.
Thank you. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes. I did receive a contribution from Mr. Bruce Taylor for $5,500, and I did return that amount of money back.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Salazar?
Yes, at this time, just would like to disclose that I received a campaign contribution in the amount of $5,500 from Taylor Fresh Foods. In speaking with my accountants, we'll be returning the funds.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sandoval?
I received no contributions, but I would like to make a statement.
Okay, we'll finish with the Levine Act disclosures. Councilmember Donahue? Or sorry, Mayor Donahue, excuse me.
I received, I did also receive a contribution of, from Taylor Fresh Foods, $5,500 and returning as required, $5,250. So that is being sent.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right. All right, Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification. Councilmember Salazar said he received it from Taylor Fresh Foods, and I just want to confirm that as appears the reporting says from Bruce Taylor. That's number one. In order to be fully transparent, I'd like to just read off all the campaign contributions. Barajas for Salinas City Council, 2024, $5,500. Committee, that's from Bruce Taylor. $5,500 from the Committee to Elect Ariel Salazar. $5,500 to the Committee to Elect Gloria De La Rosa. $149,000 from Taylor Fresh Foods to Protect Salinas, which supported all five candidates. $49,000 for the citizens to recall Andrew Sandoval. $5,500 to Mayor Dennis Donahue and $5,000 to Mayor, to Margaret De Arigo. And I have a question for the city attorney. For the Levine Act, it says if an elected official knew time before this proceeding that there would be a financial interest and still took the contribution, would that preclude them from participating in these discussions?
Councilmember Sandoval, it's a very fact-specific inquiry that we'd have to do, and so I'm not comfortable answering that question without understanding the specific facts of each contribution.
Okay, and second, some of my colleagues mentioned that they are either in the process of returning the money or have sent the money. But the fact is, if they still have that money in the account, would that still be considered a violation?
No, Councilmember, because the Levine Act provides an opportunity for council members to cure any potential violation by returning the funds within 30 days.
Okay, and just to be clear, if they knew that there was a financial transaction before 30 days from the discussion we're going to have today, and they accepted the contribution, that would be a violation of the Levine Act?
Again, I can't answer that question because it's a fact-specific inquiry as to when folks received and whether or not they knew.
Okay, well, I just want to know, let the public know that this item has been publicly discussed by the Vice President of Taylor Farms, starting in October of last year. And I know Taylor Farms had reached out to me to have a discussion regarding these items in the past. Unfortunately, the meeting did not happen. But I just have concern about the amount of contributions that Taylor Farms contributed to not only some of my colleagues, but independent expenditures. And so I just want my colleagues to be cognizant of the Levine Act and if they knowingly knew this information prior to 30 days from today, that they should recuse themselves. And I'd just like to also ask my colleagues to present the information that they in fact returned the funds to the public so that they can be comfortable. Because as of now, I've not seen any evidence that those funds have been returned. As I know, they don't have to be proven, but I'd just like to express my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, I think we
Yes, sir.
head to closed session.
Let's go.
Back at 5:00. Public comment on closed session only.
Prayer for your closed session.
Sounds like we'll need one. Go ahead.
And Father, I just thank you that there's new levels of unity and that they come together and realize that your hand is on this city that we all love. Father, I thank you for their willingness to come and operate in these areas, and I just want to bless it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
None on Zoom.
All right. We're good. Off to closed session. Back at 5:00. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started and reconvene. And before we get started with public comment, we will hear from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So there is no reportable action from closed session. While we did discuss real property negotiations, because those real estate negotiations have not been concluded, there is nothing to report out.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we are now open for public comment on items that are not on the agenda and that are in the city of Salinas subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on consideration, public hearing items, and that consent items should be held until the items are reached. Public comments are generally limited to two minutes per speaker. And this evening, I'm going to limit overall public comment to 30 minutes. We have a fairly full agenda, so general public comment will be 30 minutes. And what I've noticed, when I asked how many want to speak, a number of hands go up that I go, gee, we're all good at two minutes. However, it, what I find is a lot more folks step up, which is great. But given tonight's agenda, we will limit public comment to 30 minutes. It feels like 90 seconds is probably about right, but I'm going to go on a 30-minute mark so everyone can pay attention to the line, and I'll monitor it, and we'll do the best we can to get everyone through the gauntlet. So with, and then I do know we have, I'm not sure how far, how fast what the Our Father is, so you'll get to, you'll get to do your thing, and then we proceed to the public. I know I tend to say it too fast, which is a problem. I always have to talk to my priest about, but that's a different conversation. All right, we're open for business.
Good evening, Mayor, city attorney, city manager, city council, city staff. It's wonderful to see you this evening. I'm Kimberly Bryant, and I am here to offer a prayer to the council, to the city of Salinas, to those in the room. It is the Lord's prayer, and if you know it, please pray it along with me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, next up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, city council members. Mr. Callahan, Mr. Mendez, appreciate all you do for us. I had hoped to be here two weeks ago, prior to SB 48 letter of support, but I was ill at that time. I represent Live Oak Quaker Meeting, Salinas, California. Our meeting is over 40 years old, and the Quaker faith tradition, as you know, is nearly 400 years old in the United States. We bring to you our recent Quaker Minute. This was previewed by the Salinas interfaith community, including Pastor Ali. She's not here, from St. Pablo's Episcopal Church. Canter Margaret from Temple Beth El and Jeff from Live Oak Friends Meeting. First United pastor couldn't make it today. Neither could Mr. Presbyterian. A Quaker Minute represents the wording of a decision or an agreed-upon action to be taken by the meeting by unified consensus. The minute is then used for advocacy within our communities. We are presently circulating this minute to local politicians and other governing bodies. As Quaker, we believe that there is that of God in everyone and that we all have the right to live in peace and safety. We are deeply concerned by the present U.S. administration's attacks on our hard-working immigrant neighbors. While there are individual immigrants who have committed crimes, the vast number of immigrants, documented and undocumented, lead law-abiding lives, as you know. As it says in Exodus, Chapter 22, verse 21, "Don't mistreat or oppress an immigrant, because you were once immigrants in this land of Egypt." We remember how baby Jesus, Mary, and Joseph were refugees in Egypt. We are also deeply concerned that places of worship are no longer protected from immigration and customs enforcement. We applaud the government of California for making this a sanctuary state and support those in law enforcement who are following state guidelines. We support peoples of all faiths.
Final sentence.
We support people of all faiths in peacefully resisting these unjust and merciless actions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Louis Filia. I'm a landlord here in Salinas. This rent stabilization or rent control ultimately results in a reduction in property values. My apartment building values are based on total rents received. My property value is being artificially reduced, and this is a form of eminent domain, with the expectation of economically benefiting the public. In a free housing market, we have had past tenants that have left our units to purchase their own homes, and we were encouraged by these periods of our expanding economy. If a tenant guest wishes to purchase a home in the future, they will be disadvantaged, not experiencing real market expenses. They will be incentivized to never leave a rental or attempt to improve their situation. For example, we have a tenant guest that pays $700 less than the neighbor next door with the exact same unit. We choose to be a positive value in this business and look forward to passing this opportunity to our children. State instituted rent control on our multifamily apartments has forced us to increase rents to the dictated limit levels in fear of surprise increases in operating costs. This fear also reduces incentives to add, improve, or build new property inventory. We prefer an incentive to continue to create more rental units. When the market is not favorable or to buy or build, we have normally made improvements in our existing properties, and now this is being economically diminished. Today, uncertain impacts of rent control, operating costs such as insurance that has tripled in the last few years, or ever-increasing costs for water, power, sewer, garbage, and other expenses reduces our incentive to grow. When an industry does not grow, it dies. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, city council and mayor. I'm John Jessen. I am a landlord in the city of Salinas. It's just a mom-and-pop type operation. I'd like to request that the city council revisit the ordinances and resolutions adopted since 2023 and having to do with the rental registration and all rental units within the city of Salinas and their registration fees. As an example, my resignation for the 52-unit apartment building complex was $225 in 2023. Under the resolution you passed in November 2024, my registration fee is now $8,840, which is more than 38 times what I paid in 2023. In 2023, the rate was very low. Now we're up to $170 per unit. We please revisit this ordinance and resolution pertaining to the rent stabilization and just cause for eviction. For example, under rent stabilization, you would now limit me to an annual increase of roughly 2.75% maximum, but 75% of that number. Right now, that number sits at 1.57%, okay? So our taxes go up almost more than that. So there is nothing left to raise the rent, so they're just going to stay forever, and we're going to see really, they're not going to be taken care of very well. Your rent registration now requires the same identical information I provided in 2023. Assessors, parcels, number, street and unit number, number of bedrooms, bathroom, square feet. Even where there have been no changes since I submitted this original registration information, you are requiring me to do it all over again. You, the city, is not willing to go through and look at that and say, hey, we can do that.
Okay, got it.
Got it?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Good evening. About a week ago, I was invited to a meeting that included both Renee and Tony from one of the Montebella Neighborhood Watch members. I went to the meeting, and I was told that none of the males are going to be allowed into the meeting. Only the females were let in. We were excluded from the meeting. Now Renee came up to me, and he walked up, and he said, Malcolm, I'm going to do my job. The contract looks the same to me. Did you do your job? I don't know what you did, because we weren't allowed in the meeting. Tony, congratulations. I want to let you know that every time I touch your hand, it makes me feel sick to my stomach. And I'm going to apologize now for asking you to never reach out to touch me again. You don't represent our neighborhood, and you don't represent our Neighborhood Watch. Now, I want to go into some of the things that we should talk about. Everyone in this room should be asking the city to start doing the testing on the chemicals that we're being exposed to. This was brought up by another member of the city, and nobody's talking about it. All these chemicals, you don't know what they are. You don't know how they, the rich, the poor, the rats, the mice, everybody could be infected, and the city's not doing anything to check and see how these things hurt us. The last thing that I want to talk about is the fact that if you have a vote to determine a budget item on the last day that it's due and have to make a decision because you are not planning or you have poor planning, then that's going to be a day where I just come up and say, shame on you. You knew better, because I told you. And I'm ready, because that was the pattern we saw last year. So anything that you have that is determined by the budget or by time, you should do at least two months before you have to make the decision. Otherwise, you're being physically irresponsible.
Thank you. All right.
Mary Ann Horden. Have any of you driven down Harkins Road lately? I complained about that street before Christmas. And I went down, I'd gone down it several times. They fixed some of the potholes. They did such a, I'm going to say it's sloppy. I mean, really sloppy job on that road. I'm ashamed after being on the traffic commission for all those years and seeing work done like that. It's not right. We shouldn't be paying for stuff, sloppy jobs like that. And then our streets that have the slow traffic with the bumps on it, shame on them. They lift all the potholes down the whole streets, all over town. No matter where these new bumps are, they've left the potholes right next to the bumps. I drive, just, you know, I'm by myself now. So on Sundays, I like to take a little ride around town. And I look at the jobs that's been done. Some of them have been rolled over. Some had just been thrown in the gravel with a little bit of oil on. That's not what we should be paying for. That's not how you fix potholes. We need to hire people that know how to do the job. And we need to hire people who know how to teach these people to work. I don't care what color you are, what nationality, how you speak. When you, they should at least speak English, because I've talked, tried to talk to some of these guys, and they have no idea what I'm saying. Come on now. Let's do the job we're supposed to be doing down there. Teach the people to do the job right. Thank you. They're going to hear me until we get this done.
All right. Patty, can you switch everything to 90 seconds? I want to try and get everyone through the 30-minute.
Good afternoon.
I do? Okay. Excuse me just a second. All right, two minutes, but we will stop at the end of 30 minutes.
Good afternoon, city manager, mayor, city council members. I'm here with Montebella Neighborhood Watch, and I came to thank Mr. Barrera for setting up a meeting for us with the Alice Hall School District on February 13th and a day before calling us, not us, called my secretary and informed her that only the women would be present, no men allowed. So I find this disgusting, unprofessional, insulting. If you're going to arrange, well, first of all, don't arrange any more meetings for us with anybody else. We're capable of arranging our own meetings, especially with the school district and Salinas School District. Mr. Rojas is a trustee for the Salinas School District. Mr. Quince is the superintendent of the school district. So please stay away from our situation, and we will arrange our own meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Samniego from the Homeless Union, also a resident at the Sheriff's Center. I have been there over a year, and I addressed this issue at the last meeting. It goes to say, like this woman said, I think the problem there, too, is at the Sheriff's Center, is you have to have people qualified, they know how to do the job. That goes as well as identifying each person's mental illness and putting them in the right places and having people with lived experience, I think. That's what I mean, having people with experience to serve the people, because we have major problems there. I know Community Human Services is trying to do their best, but the truth of it is, where are the houses for us in there? I have a Section 8 choice voucher. My name was drawn September. There's like three of us left. But for the people in there, and we're almost at capacity now, where are those people going, is what I want to know. If there are no houses here in Salinas, and they're asked to get two jobs, where do you plan on putting them? If I have a voucher and I can't even get housed. And the sad part is, in the beginning, when Bax had the place and the city paid for the rent, double rent deposit, and there was some kind of cushion. Just imagine now, with our economy like this, and everybody that's asked to get two jobs, what happens when the hours cut down on that job that they have, and they can't afford that rent? They go right back to the streets, and there's nothing there, just like the motels that we had lost. There's no, it's all gone. And we need help big time over there at the Sheriff's Center, because how do you expect to serve the people on the street when you can't even serve the people in there? That's the question. So I'll be talking to Gloria De La Rosa and hopefully the mayor soon to try to figure out an answer here, because not only am I a victim, there are many people in there a victim of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Eleanor Elliott. I'm a resident of District 5, and I'm here to talk to emphasize the need for innovative long-term housing solutions in Salinas. Housing cooperatives and family land trusts are proven strategies that prevent displacement and create permanently affordable housing. The city should finance a co-op program that allows working families to have stable, long-term housing. A housing co-op allows residents to co-own and govern their housing, keeping it affordable for generations. Other communities have successfully financed co-ops through public funds, grants, and partnerships. Salinas has an opportunity here to lead by investing in a housing co-op model that will provide real stability for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, city council, mayor, and our attorney, and Mr., I'm sorry, Renee. It's age, you know, after a certain time. I, too, attended this meeting at Montebella, and I, too, was told to get out. This was a private meeting, and I couldn't attend. I've been invited to a lot of meetings from other neighborhoods and other districts because I am a Neighborhood Watch advocate, and I'll work with anyone that needs help. Because I was most told that I was trouble, but being proactive is not trouble. It's trying to help my city. So to get kicked out of a meeting because it was a private meeting, I watched the city council on the 11th, and Mr. Barrera said, we're going to have a meeting. Never did he say it was private. I was invited to attend, so I attended, and I was told to get out. That's very unprofessional. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, we're not trouble. We're trying to make our city better. And to make our city better, I've said this before, we are your eyes and ears. If somebody comes to you for a problem, don't get angry with them. Just do what you have to do or work with us to get things done. Nothing can stop the power of a commitment. And determined people do make a difference, and that's what we are. Most of us in Salinas that come to city council are very determined, and we want to make a difference, and we will not stop, and we are not trouble, all right? It's a good thing to be trouble, as John Lewis said. Good trouble. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Good evening. Olga Reyna, District 4. And I came to talk to you about the moral and economic responsibility we all share. We cannot afford to ignore the housing crisis any longer. If we don't act now, more families will be forced out of Salinas. The community we love will change forever. Investing in affordable homeownership and co-ops strengthens- Investing in affordable homeownership and co-ops strengthens the local economy by keeping the residents in the city. Cities that invest in these programs see lower homelessness rates, stronger families, and healthier communities. I urge the city to take bold action by investing in these programs. The time to act is now, and our families are counting on you, so please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, I'm Ella Shim, and I wanted to comment about, I went on Saturday to the strategic planning meeting, and I thought it was a good meeting, however, I didn't think that the, the public was given enough time to make any kind of comment or contribute. One of the things, I mean, we were able to comment at the beginning for a very short time, but then after, after the presentations were given, we weren't able to comment or ask any questions. The other thing is that I'm happy that the housing development is looking into the Chinatown revitalization and the surveying, the historic resources, and district update. So that part was good. I was interested in the HR initiative to campaign against workplace violence. I'm happy about that, but I'm sad that it has to be addressed. Why? Because if there's violence in the workplace, there's violence at home. And we shouldn't be having violence in, in our public, even in our public meeting here. There's misuse and disruption when people kick your chair, push furniture into you in a public meeting. That is just low-level discrimination and harassment. And anybody who does that to somebody, they should own up to it and stop it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Wes White, part of Billy Health Communities and Thriving Neighborhoods. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about the importance of residents' participation in budget decisions. I'm here to speak about the, Salinas residents should have a direct say in how our city invests in housing and other essential programs. Many families don't know they can influence a budget, and that must change. Supporting facts, the survey is a good start, but many residents, especially Spanish speakers, are unaware of it, nor can they engage very well. Public outreach efforts must actively engage renters, homeowners, and families most affected by housing instability. And the council must prioritize outreach efforts and transparency, ensuring every resident has a voice in how this budget is spent. Also wanted to talk about, because I have many hats, Salinas Monterey County Homeless Union co-president, also part of the lead committee, lived experience advisory directive. And the county just came up with an encampment resolution policy that is geared toward the USICH Interagency Council on Homelessness for a 19-point principle that is actually geared more toward shelter in place. So when you had shelter in place, COVID, we provided services, we provided porta-potties, bottled water, laundry service, shower access, these are the kind of things that people need. People need an address. They're not homeless, they're addressless. If they could be somewhere, you wouldn't be able to say you can't be here. And then you wouldn't be able to take everybody's possessions, their home. Now they're homeless. Once the city comes by and takes everything they got, now they're homeless. And you think about all the good, good works and good deeds, churches and just people in the community, they give of their heart, of their wallet, and what are we doing to support that from the city side? Taking it all away? Oh, it's abandoned, so of course you don't need it. It's nicely folded, it's raining outside, it's freezing. I sent you an email, you should have seen that too, and I'm hoping for clearing the record, Ms. Remendis, clear the record, stop the sweeps.
Thank you. All right, we will only have time for a couple more speakers, so.
So good evening, mayor, city council, city attorney, city manager. My name is Joel Hernandez Laguna. I have the pleasure of now serving as the executive director for the Center for Community Advocacy, 31, 35-year organization, really with the, with the mission to identify, cultivate, and recognize farmworker and low-income leadership, and then how do we advocate for improving opportunities for farmworkers and low incomes to thrive? I'm new to the role, but very familiar with the organization. I spent a decade, started as a volunteer, went on to become staff, then I had the pleasure of working four years at the Community Foundation for Monterey County, where I learned tremendously. So now coming back to serve my community. First one in my family to become an executive director, first volunteer for the organization that did a full circle, and now an executive director, and the first one from Acosta Plus, according to my research, that serves as an executive director at a local nonprofit. Our work continues the same. We have our, our housing, tenant rights and responsibilities education. We have our Promotores de Salud program that Gloria, during her time at Nantibida Medical Center and the Health Department, helped us develop. And we have our Youth for Change program, which was started a few years ago. So look forward to working with this council and future efforts, and thank you for your service. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, we will do three more speakers.
Buenas tardes, miembros de Consilio, mi nombre es Juanita Aguilar, residente del Distrito Número Uno, vengo con vecindarios prósperos de BHC. Hasta el momento hemos alcanzado en esta semana únicamente un total de 700 encuestas impresas que tenemos hasta el momento aquí. Y por supuesto queremos completar más y poder entregar el día de mañana en la junta que se va a tener del presupuesto. Estoy aquí presente para solicitarles que esta encuesta den más tiempo a la comunidad. Realmente la comunidad está respondiendo, está haciendo partícipe de esta encuesta, y aparte bueno estamos con lo que es impreso y también lo que es digital. Entonces queremos de alguna manera que todas estas tanto empresas como online puedan ser llevadas ante una junta que también se haga y que se nos deje saber cuánta gente es la que está participando. Realmente la gente está respondiendo, realmente la gente nos dice, wow, yo puedo participar en el presupuesto y eso es bueno. Entonces pues esos quiero invitarles verdad a que nos den más tiempo, a que podamos conectar con la gente para que podamos participar más con este presupuesto. Y bueno pues también ojalá que mañana podamos traer más gente, se ha invitado a toda esta gente que ha llenado las encuestas impresas, a que participemos mañana en la junta que vamos a tener el presupuesto. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Juanita Aguilar, and I'm from District 1. I'm with Thriving Neighborhoods with BHC, and I have 700 surveys that we have printed and been filled out for tomorrow's budget meeting. I'm asking to please have more time to be able to deliver these surveys because the community is responding, they are participating with, with the printed and digital surveys. And it takes time to be able to fill these, these budgets, so we're hoping that we can have more time. People are very excited that they can participate in the budget. And it's, I hope we have the meeting, and we've invited a lot of people to come to this meeting and participate in the city's budget.
Thank you.
Good evening, or late afternoon, Luis Chago Juarez for Building Healthy Communities, and really want to just recognize this, this, in this effort to engage our, our neighbors around the city budget proposal, what we're encountering are like really engaged conversations with, with folks who are normally have not participated, basically because of the language barrier. One thing that always, that I always have to remind myself is that one of our founders, the namesake of the community college, William Edward Petty Hart now, was bilingual. He actually had to learn the Spanish language, converted to Catholicism, and he, you know, he made his way into Calif, Mexican California, Alta California at the time. And then it turned out that, you know, he pretty much translated the Constitution of California into Spanish. So technically, Salinas, California was all bilingual, legally bilingual state for the first 30 years under, you know, under the American flag. And I think with that, you know, understanding and recognizing the historical value of, of specifically Salinas, you know, to really double down on the engagement with our neighbors, our neighbors mostly, again, monolingual Spanish speakers, those who are working, working in our local lag industry, receiving wages that don't make, that don't make the rent, you know? That rent that, that we fought really hard for that ordinance the past year is, is a testament to the degrees of the need of the inequity, the existing inequity that exists in our, in ours, in our community. So something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Nidia Soto. Soy organizadora de Vecindarios Prósperos con BHC, construyendo comunidades saludables. Y estoy aquí como una residente preocupada, organizadora de este equipo, en esta organización, para compartir con ustedes que ser dueño de una casa no debería ser un sueño imposible para los residentes de Salinas, para las familias trabajadoras. El presupuesto de la ciudad debe de priorizar un fondo comunitario para compradores de vivienda por primera vez, asegurando que las familias locales tengan la oportunidad de quedarse y generar estabilidad aquí en esta ciudad. El costo de vida en Salinas que aumenta sin asistencia financiera, muchas familias nunca podrán comprar una casa. Otras ciudades han implementado con éxito fondos para compradores de vivienda por primera vez. Salinas puede hacer lo mismo. Invito a los concejales a este consejo a destinar fondos para este programa para que la propiedad de viviendas sea accesible, no solo para los ricos, sino para las personas que viven y trabajan en, en esta comunidad. Gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is Nidia Soto, and I'm with Thriving Neighborhoods and BHC. I am here as a worried citizen, as an organizer, because the dream of being a homeowner should not be an impossible dream. There are a lot of families, working families, that live here in Salinas, so I am asking for the city council to have a fund for first-time buyers. This creates opportunity for people to be able to buy their homes. It creates stability and allows the work, the people that work here in Salinas to stay here. The cost of life is very high, and it should not be impossible to be able to buy a home. The city should have funds for the first-time buyer program. Many other cities have been able to implement this with a lot of success. Housing here in Salinas should be affordable, not only for the people that are rich, but for the people that live and work here in Salinas. Thank you.
All right. All right, one more, and then we'll cut it off.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Chávez, y vivo en el Distrito 4. Te formo parte de la Escuelita o Vecindarios Prósperos. Pido por favor si hay fondos de dinero. Piensen en familias de bajos ingresos que están sufriendo por los altos costos de renta y que todo está caro, y sobre todo los trabajadores del field y empaques que su trabajo es temporal. Y este también a veces pues tienen niños pequeños y pues se necesita mucho también para mantener a los niños, y están sufriendo más que otras personas. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is María Chávez, I'm from District 4. I'm also from the, from Las Partas de la Escuelita or Thriving Neighborhoods. I'm asking to please consider funds for low-income families. Costs here are very high, living expenses are very, very high, and most of the people that work here work in the field, and they only have seasonal works, seasonal jobs. Also, some of these families have children, and honestly, it is really, really hard to be able to make and meet and cover these children's needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and thank you to the public. All right, with that, public comment is now closed, and we will proceed to the consent agenda. Matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion unless the member of the council requests a separate vote to discuss, and members of the public may comment on the consent items collectively during their public comment. Would any member of the council like a discussion on any of the consent items? Councilmember Barras.
One of them would be ID 25-032, and also I would like to pull item 25-040, the financial claims report for a separate vote. I'll be recusing myself from the city council's consideration of the approval on check number 482152 and the amount of $2,500 for Leadership Monterey County. While I do not believe I have disqualifying conflict of interest in this item, I will be recusing myself out of an abundance of caution in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety. I will, however, participate in the city council's consideration of the remainder of the items on the financial claims report, so I request that there be a separate vote on check number 482152 and a separate vote on the remaining items on the financial claims report.
Thank you, council member. All right, any other?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted just for comment 025 and 026.
025 and 026, all right. Okay, council member Sandoval. 026, did somebody pull 032? I wasn't sure on that one.
Yeah, but I was.
I'll just reserve for comment, in case. Okay. My left. Any, all right? Very good. All right. Okay, anyone from the public on, on the consent agenda? Anyone who wishes to make a public comment on any consent items may do so now, and limit to two minutes, and you may speak on any item at this time.
The item 026, I believe, is a item that is budget orientated and it needs to be approved today, is that correct? Anything that has to do with budget and budget approvals should be presented 60 days before you have to give the approval. So I forget exactly which one of these items are, but one of them is. And if you're having to approve a budget item today, after I've gotten up here four times in the last two months to say that this is your modem of Apparendi, that is inappropriate, unresponsible, right? And if you do that today, I'm gonna be sitting here laughing at you because I told you that that's exactly what your strategy was, and that it's wrong. You guys shouldn't be asking for any money for any parks or appropriating any land. I think that's 25. You don't have money to pay for the parks that you have. You don't manage your parks. You don't support the parks that we helped to pay for, and you saying that you're gonna take on more responsibility with your current budget as you demonstrate a lack of ability to have safe, beautiful parks already? How are you gonna take on more when you can't deal with what you got? Please, if you have a budget item, or you have to approve something, 60 days so people can have public comment, and people can dispute the decision, and please don't take on more responsibility till you can deal with what you already have on your plates. Please fix the parks that are already associated with the city before you do anything else because the last thing you want to do is take that land and ruin it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public?
Hello, council, I would just like to say, ask a question, would it be appropriate to talk about the item, ID?
Well, it would be public comment, so you're welcome to comment.
Okay, 023D, 023?
Right, but it would be a comment. Oh, okay, it's a consideration item. Okay, yeah, we'll let you know. Don't go far. We got you in the front row, you're in our line of sight. We won't lose you. Okay, Yolanda?
Am I on the consent agenda or?
Consent agenda, yeah, just any comment on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd really like to know how many parks does Salinas have? And why are we spending so much money on Cluster Park? We have plenty of parks already, and I know it's a big, large community, but the number of monies that go into this park, I'm sorry to say this, but it's like putting lipstick on a pig. You keep throwing money, keep throwing money into this park, and yeah, the residents need it, but you're not improving the neighborhood. That neighborhood, you go down Laurel, and it is a mess everywhere. Why are we spending so much money on this park, and we're not taking care so much money on this park and we're not taking care of the entire neighborhood? I go by there and the bins, trash, dirty. Something needs to be done. We need to help those people that live in that area. It's not just letting them live and squander. We need to do something to, to fix that area and stop spending, unless you want to move them all to the park to live there. It's nicer than the rest of the area. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. Okay. Anyone else?
Eleanor Elliott, District Five. Just wanted to pipe in here one more time tonight. I think the renovations on the building at Cluster Park are fantastic, are fantastic idea. I have been there and seen the kids that are training in boxing, doing sock, playing soccer. They have activities, they're organized, and they're staying off the streets, and they're keeping the kids out of gangs. That is, I think it's important. And I think money going into Cluster Park is fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments?
Mary Ann Warden. It's about time Cluster Park got taken care of. I live out in that area. When my kids were there, we had the tiny tot little building. We had the playground there, plus the baseball parks, the basketball courts, and nothing else. And our bathrooms. Rotary, I believe it was Rotary or Stein, one of the clubs here took it upon themselves to redo our Cluster Park. And they've done a fantastic job of it. And we, the people that here in city council have really took on the of keeping it up and fixing it up so it doesn't go back to nothing. Central Park used to be a beautiful park too. They have fixed it up a little bit. But Sherwood Park was another one that was very, very nice. Really, it isn't anymore. We need to get back to fixing those tennis courts and everything else in there. Parks are important to our kids. With, parks are a place where you can take your children and let your children play and run and scream and yell and do everything else in there. That is a great place to spend with your kids. But please, don't put down Cluster Park. They deserve it. They, for years, we didn't have much out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Okay. Anyone else from the public? All right. Public, anyone on Zoom?
We have two on Zoom. Go ahead, Robin. Two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Donahue. So like many of community members, I too am concerned about our budget and the spending. It is lipstick on a pig. It is always putting the cart before the horse. It's also disappointing that Zoom members don't get a separate time for public comment. It's appearing as though no one is going to rein in Mr. Mendez. And it's, it's disturbing. There's definitely a pattern emerging over profits over people, enforcement over fairness, and control over constitutional rights. The homeless sweeps and Amazon warehouse prioritized over building affordable housing. It's essential that our elected council members prioritize accountability over political agendas, hold unelected officials responsible, and take prompt action to restore integrity in governments. And right now, I'm very concerned about whether or not you're gonna choose to do that, Mayor Donahue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next Zoomer.
Arian Coronado, two minutes.
Hello, my name's Arian Coronado. You know, I seen the Cluster Park that's on the agenda. And I just want to say to please continue to invest in the parks. I grew up in the area in Cluster Park in the early 2000s where crime rate was at its highest. We need to continue to invest in the next generation because public safety is more than policing. Our children need a Dennis and Menace Park like the one that's in Monterey in East Salinas. They need equitable and a beautiful play area to thrive in. We need more investment in our parks. And I hope you all continue to do so and not forget about the beautiful district of East Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, that will, is there one more?
We have one more, Mayor.
Yes, okay.
David, David Mason of two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. You know, I've been over to Cluster Park. I think it's an amazing place for the neighborhood. However, I'm kind of concerned with the fact that it gets run down so fast. So I don't know if it's because we're not maintaining it properly, or if we need to be educating the public on how to maintain and take care of their, what they get to use. So yeah, that's all I've got to say on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Patty, is that it on Zoom? That's it. Okay, great. All right. Public comment is closed. Let me, let me just check with the city attorney.
Um, you can go there first.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Okay, we will, item 40 was, was pulled. So any, any addition, anything additional? Councilmember Barra.
He's from discussion on item 4820, on check number 482152.
Okay. Okay. So that's a clarification. Then just move on.
So we'll need to take, Mayor, we'll need to take action on that item separately from the rest of the financial claims. So if we could start there so that, because you'll need to recuse yourself by stepping out of the room. And so we'll ask for a motion for approval of check 482152 as soon as you're out of the room.
All right. You want, should we do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. You need to leave. Go out in front. Close your ears. Or be out of earshot. And then we will, we'll summon you back.
So just to clarify, this is check number 482152, which is a part of your financial claims. And this is the payment to Leadership Monterey County, that program. And so we'll need action on this item from the council.
Okay, let me, there's a, okay, the motion second, and then, then question, councilmember Sandoval. What is that program?
It's a, a training program that is a separate 501(c)(3) organization, as I, if I remember correctly, that provides training to professional individuals in the community.
Yeah, there's also, through the mayor, again. So Leadership Monterey Peninsula, I know this because when I worked in the field of philanthropy, we often funded them. But the Leadership Monterey Peninsula, there's also a Salinas version. It's really intended to provide assistance for anyone that's interested in our local sector industries and preparing them to serve on committees, commissions, and boards. So it's a real, it's a real asset. It helps any general member of the public who wants to get involved, engaged in their respective city or county on how to be an effective local, local leader. I think it's a, I think it's a really great program. I know that it's, it does get some support from the philanthropy field as well as small businesses. And so I did second the motion, so.
Okay. All right. Any additional comments? All right. We'll go ahead and, we have a first and a second. We'll go ahead and call for the question. Patty?
Councilmember Barra has recused. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Aye.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, very good. And if, councilmember, he was listening. All right. Welcome back. All right, we will then, as soon as he gets back up here, we'll proceed to item 25. I'll
Mayor, excuse me, we'll have to take action on the remaining financial claims.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So moved. Salazar.
Second.
All right. Patty?
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval? Mayor Donahue?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Very good. I'm sure glad the city attorney sits to my right. So thank you, Chris, for catching that. All right, let's go to item 25. Councilmember Barrahas and Councilmember Barrera, you wanted to comment on that. All right, it's just Tony. Okay, Tony, go ahead, please.
BB, thank you, Mayor. You know what, Mayor, I was just going to applaud this program, but I think there was some good questions from the, from the people we serve here. I heard, why are we wasting so much money? But what I, if you could please share with us the condition of those bathrooms right now and what, what it will do, the investment that it will bring to those children. We have anywhere from 75 to 100 children every day in that building. So please share the condition of the, of the bathrooms now and then, and what we're gonna set out to do.
Sure. So the restrooms that we're talking about are the ones that are in the recreation center that are used daily through the boxing club program. They are very outdated. They are worn down after lots of wear and tear for many, many years. And so what we're gonna be doing is doing a full renovation of those restrooms to include ADA accessibility, which will increase access and provide just a safer and cleaner space for our youth.
Yes. And I think you, I may thank you. And you know what? There are children that participate as well that are ADA compliant. Some, a couple of them on wheelchairs or other physical disabilities. I, I think where the investment is here, if you go over there to that recreation center right now, you'll see about 75 children. But the restrooms are super bad. So I, I want to commend the staff. I think this money is an investment. So Mayor, one already, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Let me make some clarification.
Okay.
I just want to, to the mayor, clarify that this is a CIP. So some of this was already determined by the city in prior budgets. So let me just think, let's talk about how these projects work. A lot of times we come and ask the council to allow us to do an RP. So we do an RP. It starts a lot of times when we set the appropriation and amount in the budget. So at that point, as discussed, that doesn't give us the authority to go ahead and spend the money. We just set aside the budget. Then based on public bidding processes and so forth, it comes back to the council. So this is not the first time any of these projects happened before this council. Now, it could have been a prior council, it could have been a council, whatever, but this is, that's just the way it works. It's not like this showed up today for the first time. So we're here because the city council has already given us authority to move this project forward.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right.
Thank you.
All right, anything? Antonio, I thought I heard a motion in a second. All right, Patty?
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to item 26. And that was issuing your back.
Yes.
You are an inquisitive councilmember.
You know what, and I do appreciate, City Manager, thank you for sharing with us regarding the funding. I think this is another great project in District Five. I'm, I'm looking at the report, but Mr. Mendez, again, can you just share a little bit to our, the people we serve here regarding the ARPA funding and how this project is, is financially coming to fruition?
So I think I can have Kristen help me out here. But again, this was a project that was formally deliberated, approved by council to bring it forward. So that's why it's here. And we go through, so a lot of these times, these projects do not happen overnight. They take a long time to get to the point where we're coming to the council and asking permission to, to award a contract.
Yes.
And the other thing that occurs, when funding comes in and we have to come in and ask for additional money, we also have to come in and ask the council, particularly when we're, we're trying to get it from another source. So we don't know that till we finish, till we get to the point where we're like, okay, the bits have come in and now we're short. So if you think about lead time, these projects have been in the hopper for months, sometimes years, before we get here.
And with that, Mayor, if I may, Ms. Lundquist, can you just share with the public what, what the investment is gonna be here for District Five?
Sure, absolutely. This contractor, this agreement with BFS is over a number of projects to include the design of Cluster Park's renovation project, the El Gabal and Tot Lot, as well as design of two universal playgrounds, one at North Gate, as well as one at Williams Ranch. And so what we're doing is extending the time period of the agreement with BFS to complete those projects. And we're also asking for reappropriation of an additional $100,000 from the infrastructure maintenance reserve in order to do the accessibility improvements that are required at North Gate as part of the ADA requirements of the universal playground.
Yes, great.
And before you, you do have a updated resolution that outlines the, the funding mechanism for that additional $100,000.
Yes. That I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Go ahead with comment, and then we'll see if there are any others.
Just for the public, and I'll ask the city clerk to update the attachment on the website. But originally, the, the request for the reappropriation of 100,000 was to come from the District Five Rec Center Reserve CIP. And so I appreciate the staff's proactive finding another place to pull that 100,000 for. My, my question is, that's from a maintenance improvement fund. So what are we, do we have plans to, what does that, what does that fund cover? And do we have plans to re-invest that money back into that fund?
So to the mayor, it's a reserve fund. So it's used for, we've used it, for example, we can use it for maintenance of like another facility that we need to invest in. So it's really there for us to have a funding source to bring it back to you to tap into. So it's, it's, it's a general reserve fund, like other reserve funds.
And then, since we're on the topic of the North Gate Park, last week I had a resident reach out for the timeline of the North Gate Park. Can I get a quick update on that as well?
And are you talking about the universal playground?
Yes.
So we anticipate receiving the playground equipment end of March, potentially in April, and then we'll be working to schedule installation. We're finalizing our permitting process to, for both the installation of the playground as well as the ADA improvement. So it'll be coming within the next few months.
Okay, great. And I'm excited to see that that park has an ADA component to it as well. Thank you.
We have a first and a second. Any additional comments? All right, Patty?
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. All right. Andrew, did you have anything on 32?
Is there a comment after hearing the presentation? Or was there gonna be a presentation?
No, it's a consent, it's a consent item. Okay. All right. With that, I will add, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make a quick comment and, you know, thank my colleagues on the dais for previously supporting SB 48 unanimously. And, you know, really being a united front and supporting our undocumented immigrant population here in Salinas. If you look at the letter that's being submitted to the state legislature, 38% of our community members are foreign born. And a good number of those people are also undocumented. You know, when we live in times like this where, you know, children and parents are afraid to go to school, go to their medical appointments, drop their kids off at a daycare center, you know, that's no way to live, right? I think, as I've got, I had an opportunity to go to the immigrant rights forum at Alasaw High School. And I, one of the key takeaways that I took from one of the presenters, and I wish I could remember her name right now, but she was with the Watson Ballot Center. And she specifically stated, you know, let's not live in fear, let's live in power, right? So part of that message is kind of what we're trying to do, send here today to our community members, is we're not trying to live in fear of, you know, whatever the federal government is doing at this time, the rhetoric with immigration enforcement. We're standing in power and united with all of you, particularly our undocumented immigrant residents. And thank you for choosing Salinas as your place to make it home and realize your American dream.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrahas. Okay. I am looking for a, a motion on item 32 and the minutes in one fell swoop. Do I have that motion?
Second?
Second.
Any comments on the minutes? Just kidding. Council, Patty, go ahead. Very serious.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLaRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, with that, we will proceed to consideration items, and we are going to talk about Car Lake. Kristen, you're getting a workout tonight, back and forth, back and forth. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Kristen Lundquist, Library and Community Services, and I want to start first by recognizing our partnership with community development and the city attorney on this effort, as well as our fantastic partners at the Big Sur Land Trust. So, we're here this evening to talk about a conveyance agreement for Enson Park from the Big Sur Land Trust to the city of Salinas. Can you advance a slide for me? Thank you. So, this has been a fantastic partnership that started many years ago, and we've been working with the Big Sur Land Trust since 2008 to the development of Car Lake. You may recall, some of you, in March of '22, the city council also authorized an MOU between the Big Sur Land Trust and the city for long-term management of the park. And through this conveyance agreement, Enson Park is to be transferred to the city to own and maintain going forward. So, the Phase 1 of this property includes a six-acre neighborhood park. I think many of you have been out to tour this amazing new addition to our park system. It also includes a front house and a water well. The Phase 1 property must be conveyed by March of 2025, and that's why we're here this evening. And we are looking and working in partnership with the Big Sur Land Trust to open Enson Park the summer of 2025. Phase 2 will include the restoration area, which is an additional 67 acres, and that will begin, construction will begin the spring of 2025 and be open to the public by spring of 2026. So, the conveyance agreement outlines a number of terms and obligations on the city's behalf as well as the Big Sur Land Trust. And so, from the city's side, we will operate and maintain the park after the conveyance of the property. Permanently, the front house is permanently deed restricted for use as moderate workforce affordable housing, so that property will remain in affordable housing opportunities. And the back house, which is further into the property, will be restricted for specific park-related uses. So, that could be storage, that could be a maintenance area, that could be a community meeting space, a lot of different opportunities for the back house. The Big Sur Land Trust will transfer the property for $0 to the city and is responsible for completing both of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 improvements. Through this agreement, Big Sur Land Trust will retain access to the park during the Phase 2 constructions for the restoration improvements. They will be able to hold up to four events per year at the park. And then, they'll also have some naming right opportunities and be able to install murals and other art installations. On January 8th, 2025, the conveyance agreement was presented to the Library and Community Services Commission, and they voted unanimously to recommend to the city council that it approved the conveyance agreement between the city and the Big Sur Land Trust. So, there was a general plan consistency analysis as well, and this conveyance aligns with the 2002 general plan. The acquisition addresses some city park acreage shortfall, which is important. The project also offers environmental benefits, improved water quality and climate change mitigation. And the park will also meet the following general plan goals and policies. Goal COS-7, policy COS-7.1, policy COS-7.2, and also 7.3. The city has determined that the proposed action is not a project as defined by CEQA. And environmental impacts of the Car Lake project have been analyzed in accordance with CEQA. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration adopted by the city council on September 14th, '21, found that the adopted mitigation measures, the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. And tonight before you is a motion to approve resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a conveyance agreement between the Big Sur Land Trust and the city of Salinas to transfer approximately 73 acres identified as the Car Lake Park Project, Enson Park, for the purpose of public park use and management. And that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. I will look to my left. Councilmember DeRigo, any, anything from you?
Bravo. I was able to visit the site last week. It is absolutely phenomenal. It's state-of-the-art. It's the most beautiful park that I've seen, and they've done such good work, and I really appreciate the partnership that you've had with the Big Sur Land Trust. I think everybody, it's a win-win for our community, and I plan to enjoy it myself, and I think there'll be so many thousands of people that will enjoy that beautiful park, so I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. All right. Gloria, any questions?
Yeah. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I also went to the tour, and I have to tell everyone here that I echo what Margaret said. This is a state-of-an-art park. The architect, the developer is the tops. I'm not kidding you. Wait till you see this park. It is the gem of Salinas. Sorry, everybody, it is the gem. Because I remember calling it that. A lot of people, it's in the middle of Salinas, and it is, it is a beautiful, beautiful park. And all of us are going to be able to benefit from it. And the other best thing, it's a dog park. So, and it's dividing the larger dogs from the smaller dogs, which is good. So, I also want to thank all the community members that put a lot of input, you know, into it. CCA, Building Healthy Communities, a lot of other community members that came and gave the input, and I'm so grateful because I get to see this happen after 20 years at Car Lake, Car Lake. And I like the name, Esalon. So, and the reason I'm saying this, because, as you well know out there, I'm not feeling that great, and I think after I approve this, I need to leave. Yeah, I need to leave. I'm not feeling well.
That underscores how important it is you're going to get that done.
Anyways, I did my comic, so yay! There.
Very good. All right, Aurelio, any questions?
Yeah, I remember hearing about this way back in 2008, and the Big Sur Land Trust was very transparent in saying that it was going to take about 10, 20 years for this to happen. So, I was doing the math, and I was like, okay, it was 17, so they kept true to that. I remember at that time, you know, really wanting to see it happen a lot sooner rather than later, but the Big Sur Land Trust was very clear that they wanted to have community engagement and that they wanted to engage the stakeholders from everything, from like the design to the naming, and it went through a lengthy process of doing that. And so, just want to, want to thank them. For those of you that don't know, right, the Big Sur Land Trust was founded in 1978, and they've, they've put in, I believe, in the constitution about over 45,000 acres of land. I think their values are, if you visit their website, their values talk about being committed to healthy lands, healthy people, and healthy communities. And so, really just want to acknowledge all the work that's been, that's been done. I drive by the park every morning on my, on my way to work, so I've been able to see it. I avoided the tour because I want to, I want to be there when the rest of the public gets to, to be a part of it. I just want to acknowledge all the work that Big Sur, I'm waving at you guys over there, Big Sur Land Trust, and also CCA. I know that CCA also played a big role in, in some of the community engagement activities and making sure that, that community input was there. And so, just thanks again for all that, how you done it. And yeah, we'll, we'll do our part as well, making sure that we conserve and protect it.
Good. All right, thank you. Any questions over here? Let's see, Andrew, we'll start with you, first head nod.
Sure, thank you. Mayor, I know that in the past, there was a discussion about a tax measure to help cover the maintenance, as we've heard from many of our constituents, residents here, you know, across social media. It's great to get these amazing parks, but do we have a plan to make sure we're able to fund the ongoing maintenance of this park?
The short answer is, we're working, we'll bring back a plan to you. We don't have a fully baked plan yet. We have some thoughts and ideas and recommendations. As you know, this has been in the works for a long time, and so, it's, so the city's honoring its obligation, but working with the Big Sur Land Trust, we're going to bring forward some funding recommendations and ideas. And I think the spirit of the, the spirit of the park and how it got here and all the community input, I think we're going to really lean into that to bring some recommendations to the council.
Thank you. And my other question is, the city council's been intentional in its effort to have local artists, you know, handle the murals, and I know that, you know, the Big Sur Land Trust, I mean, talking about community engagement, it's incredible, but will that, those murals and artists kind of go through the same process through our Arts Commission and, you know, trying to find local artists, or how will that work?
Yeah, we've had conversations with the Big Sur Land Trust. They're aware of the Public Art Commission and, and our public art plan, and so, we will work together through that as we move forward.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Barrera?
Ms. Lundquist, can you take us to the slide of conveyance terms and conditions? There's no doubt this is, this is fantastic. Great partnership. Looking forward to going to the, to operate for it. You know, on the operation and maintenance of our, we heard from some of our people that we serve earlier today, who are taking on other obligations. How would we answer taking on other obligations when they feel that we're not doing good maintenance, and what would they, how would we answer that?
So, I think we all know that, that we are short, the Quimby Act, in terms of the number of acres per residence, and we all recognize the value that parks bring to a community. And so, that is a critical piece that I think justifies the addition to bring, you know, additional acreage on. In addition to talking about a plan and how we might establish additional funding opportunities, we are also working in collaboration with the Big Sur Land Trust to develop a Friends of Car Lake Park. And so, we envision not only having city resources, but also tapping into the community and the buy-in and all of the great work that's already been done to galvanize community to really make a difference and assist with the maintenance and upkeep of that park.
Yeah. Ms. Lundquist, in your report, there's a sentence that says, "Staff has developed a staffing plan to forecast staffing needs for the near future." What does that look like? What about the plan?
So, the national average of acreage per full-time equivalent of a park maintenance worker is 11 acres per full-time equivalent employee. With the addition of the seven-acre park, the city's rate will be 14.9 acres per FTE. And then, with the addition of the 73, or the additional 67 acres, it will go up even drastically more to 17.76. So, the city manager and I have worked, been working on a plan to work incrementally to get the city to that 11 acres per FTE. It's a plan that's over six, seven years. I mean, it's a, an extensive plan to do that, but I do think having additional resources and staff to support our parks is important as we move forward.
Yeah. Well, let me ask the city attorney my next question, and he can ask for some support there. Mr. Mendez, on this report, it talks about additional park maintenance resources will be required to fund the operation and maintenance. Again, just like what Ms. Lundquist had mentioned, in our funding, depending on how many staff we'll need, do you think we will be able to do that? Or how many people do you think we need to hire? Is it two, three, or do we know?
So, I do think we'll be bringing some recommendations to the council during the budget.
Yeah.
It's going to be more than one, but we want, need to be measured in how we do it and how we finance it. It's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. So, this has been in the works for a number of years. And what you, what you approved in the consent budget was frankly, investment in existing parks. So, if you think about what you did, you took ARPA funding, you took other funding, combined and mirrored it, and then invested in existing resources that we have today. So, we have to do that, right? So, that happened. Now, we're at the point where we have, taken advantage of this golden opportunity, and how do we galvanize the community to sort of get behind it? And we're always sort of working, well, we get this, we'll get that, right? So, this is an opportunity, I think, that can be as a rallying sort of point for the community. And so, that's why we're going to rely on the Big Sur Land Trust and all our partners, and we're going to probably be having some very challenging conversations with the council and the community about what this means and what are we able to support, short term and long term.
Yeah, I think I just have one or two more questions. I've heard Big Sur Land Trust already in helping us. Is there, and I think in some of the meetings that we had, we were talking about maintenance dollars. Is the Big Sur Land Trust going to help us with the maintenance dollars?
No, I think what they're going to do, help us put a, put a strategy together and help us sort of galvanize the community. Because throughout this effort, they were able to generate a lot of public input, a lot of public engagement, and frankly, a lot of excitement over this opportunity.
Yeah, and I don't want to be redundant here, but my last question, because this park is going to open here shortly. Do you see that we'll have staff available? Because the grass is going to start growing quickly. The weeds are going to come out. Do, the last thing we need is more criticism on top of what we had this evening, but do you think we're going to have the staff in place by the time the grass needs to get cut?
So, we'll be working to modify our landscape maintenance contract with Smith and Unright to ensure that the mowing is included in that. And you may recall, a couple of months ago, you also authorized an over-hire of a park maintenance worker, so we've already have an additional staff person who's there to support this effort going forward. And then, we'll continue to have conversation about what's needed in the future.
Great. Sounds great. Mr. Mayor, are we going to have comments?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have everyone have a chance to have final comments. Okay. Councilmember Barajas?
All my questions were asked, but thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, we will jump out to the public and see if there are any comments on this item. You're on, two minutes.
Hello, council. I hope you're having a good evening. Let me, let me start by saying we are unceded land. That being said, it feels really good to participate in my local community, whether that's through a public comment. We need more young people to come out here in the community meetings just to, you know, voice out their opinion, no matter what it is. I would like to talk about that, that this park really holds a kind of a special place in my heart. Ever since I got into the community, you know, working with the community, I've been looking forward to the opening of this park. Specifically, one of the parts of this park, the name Enson, which means land of the blackberry brambles, deeply relates to the relationship of the Aloney, Kosonua, and Esalen people, some of the original people that were here in Salinas originally. I think that this park gives us a greater opportunity to expand on some of that local history that we can talk about and, you know, give that wisdom to our young people that are in Salinas to know about, you know, the original people that were here. I think it's great and can, it can create more opportunities to promote the local history of Salinas, which I deeply feel is really important because if we want to create a better future for ourselves, we have to know why the streets are named certain people, why certain areas are, you know, developed differently, you know? I believe that that is something great, and we should keep on fulfilling, you know, having more community, having more community input to maybe have certain things named, you know, differently, or having them to, you know, having a discussion about what should we name this, which was a part of this plan originally. I remember participating in that and that, you know, knowing that this is going to be a great place to understand and learn more about that history. So, I would like to get more opportunities or let... the council think more about that.
Good. Great. Thank you for coming. Thanks for your patience. We got you up there. All right. Next up.
Good evening, Mayor Donahue and council members. My name is Jeanette Tuiteli Lewis, and I serve as president and CEO for Big Sur Land Trust. This is a historic evening. We are hitting another major milestone in this project. And so, I just want to commend the staff at the city. They've been incredible to work with, just really exemplifying, I think, what a really strong public-private partnership should really look like. And I just want to just commend the staff and their team. And Chris Callahan for all of your work, those many hours going through everything and working with us, alongside us. Also, Lisa Brenton and Kristin Lundquist. We have been at this for many, many years to really make sure that we are looking at all of the things, both from the side of the city, as well as the needs of Big Sur Land Trust and us, to be able to be accountable to both the community and all of those that have participated in funding this incredible project. This is going to be about a $35 million-plus gift given to the city. I want to thank you for, you know, the, the million dollars that were, where it was contributed by the city. That's a big deal. The fact that the city came together and approved that really helped us leverage additional funding. This project is almost completely grant-funded. We have been able to pull grants from all over the state, thanks to our really good relationships with natural resource agencies. I want to just uplift the state of California, who has just really been incredibly supportive of this project and really sees it as a model across the state, which is really exciting. So, we've got a lot of eyes on us. And so, we need to be able to move forward. I just, you know, want to encourage also good stewardship, long-term. You are going, you have the baton now. So, thank you. And I encourage you to move forward with a conveyance agreement. Thank you so much.
Next up.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Valeria from Alisal. I have been with Youth for Change and CCA for half a year. And I want to encourage Salinas to take over Ensen Park. I believe it's an exciting opening for the people of Salinas with an amazing impact, where they can gather with family and friends, maintaining tradition and culture. My experience at the park and the activities hosted by Big Sur Land Trust have created long-lasting memories and connections with the community members. We recently gathered together filling in surveys regarding the maintaining, cleaning the park. And again, I believe that it's best for Salinas to take over the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Genesis Mojica. I am here with CCA as the lead youth organizer. I have gotten the opportunity through my position to assist and organize multiple activities at Ensen Park and the Garden with Big Sur Land Trust. For example, some of them being insect discoveries, multiple art, multiple art in the garden activities, as well as education on plants and the waterways of Salinas, and including the cultural, the cultural history of the land. Every activity bringing families and communities together through these experiences, allowing exposure and resources and new opportunities for both programs and community. I have developed a close bond with the consistent attendees and participants of these activities, many of them coming from Acosta Plaza. And it has been a pleasure to see the pure excitement for the future of Ensen Park. This park is in the center of Salinas, truly representing a symbol of community as Ensen. I support the staff on this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Buenas tardes, señor alcalde y miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Columba Rios. Soy residente del distrito seis. Soy promotora de salud y líder de CCA por quince años. Primeramente, quiero agradecerles que después de tanta espera, esfuerzo y trabajo, ahora sí el parque es una realidad, del cual nos beneficiaremos todas las familias, especialmente los niños. Porque hay pocos lugares en los cuales ellos puedan pasar momentos felices y disfrutar al aire libre. Eso les ayudará a mantenerse activos y reducir el estrés. Algo más que me emociona, que ya me miro yo caminando ahí y llevando a pasear a las personas de la tercera edad. Estoy segura que nos ayudará a estar mejor de salud emocionalmente, ni dudarlo. Por eso estoy aquí para pedirles que aprueben la resolución para el acuerdo de la transferencia entre Big Sur y la ciudad de Salinas de 73 acres de Car Lake. Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. My name is Columba Rios, and I'm from District Six. I'm also promotora de salud, and I have been an organizer with CCA for 15 years. Thank you so much for all the work. Thank you so much because our dream and for all the work that we've put, the park is finally going to be a reality. This is something that all the families need. Many children do not have a place where they can go and play outside, have activities. This is going to help them with the stress. No doubt, it's going to help them with their health, with their health and lower their stress. And also, I can see myself walking already there with the people from our, that are senior citizens. This is going to help also with their emotional health and their health. So, I'm here to please ask you to approve the resolution of Big Sur and to do the transfer or the conveyance, to sign the conveyance treatment for 73 acres of Car Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, you're back.
I'm back. Sorry, but I've been a part of this plans
Yes.
since probably the 60s. At meetings at Sharon Hall, where we were allowed to come out, people from Alisal weren't allowed to go in. It was only the people from this side of town that were allowed to be in that meeting. I've been in plans, and I have some plans that said we'd have a horse, people have the horses out there stable, so that we could take rides on stable. We had plans for the little boats and canoes for the kids to go riding out there in their little rowboats and fishing. No motor boats, just little sailboats. I've got all kinds of plans on this park. And I'm so happy that before I'm dead, we got some two little parks there. The only thing I was disappointed, I wasn't invited for the opening. Because I have been a part of it. We had the, back then, native people used to go out there and clean all the time. They've really worked through there. Now, I don't know if you, some of you know, we have, I think, a marker on the Nativity Dad side, where we had the soldiers camp along Car Lake, way back when. So, I mean, there's a lot of history out there. My neighbors, a bunch of onions out there, all through high school, and then, and their parents did too. There's lots and lots of history there. And I am thrilled to death to know that it's opening. I've been watching it being built. And I'm really thrilled. So, you see why I'm here. But next time you open it, I want to be invited, if I'm still here.
Man, you're not going anywhere. All right.
Buenas tardes a todos, miembros del consilio y alcalde. Mi nombre es Jesús Estrada. Soy organizador con Centro de Advocacia de la Comunidad, mejor conocido como CCA. Yo estoy aquí para hacer un comentario que fui parte de, del parque el año pasado y antepasado. Me acuerdo que fuimos con un grupo de jóvenes con que estamos trabajando con CCA, a plantar plantas con palas, agua y todo eso. Y me voy a sentir muy orgulloso ser parte de ese trabajo comunitario comenzando con el parque. Y espero que, que aprueben esa resolución de acuerdo para que puedan continuar y, y terminar el trabajo. Que eso nos puede beneficiar a todos donde podemos disfrutar el parque. Antes que nada también quiero agradecerles por la resolución que han aprobado. Sinceramente agradecido con ustedes por otras resoluciones que han aprobado. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor, my name is Jesús Estrada, and I'm an organizer with CC, with CC, and with CCA, I'm sorry. And I'm here because I was part, I am very proud to be part of the park. Not this, this year and the last, we went with a group of youth, and we planted plants with shovel, water, and everything. And I was very, very proud to be part, part of the park. So, I really hope that you approve this resolution. I really hope that you approve it, so we can continue with all the work. And this is going to be something that's going to benefit us all. So, I want to thank you for this resolution and other resolutions that you have taken in the past that has been benefit to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council, mayor. Luis Chagojuez, we're building healthy communities. And just, yeah, just want to just project this excitement around this park and, and the history, as was mentioned by the young man, that deep history of it being part of the Esalen, unceded territory, the Esalen, the Alonee Kostanoean Esalen Nation. This, this park is going to be a geographic point to really, you know, recognize the stages of history, you know, going all the way back to not just the Esalen, but also Spanish California, Mexican California. The acquisition by Jesse D. Carr himself, which was a, some fascinating history that I got to learn about that man, who came from Tennessee. And it was in Dr. Carolyn DeKibbin's Salinas Racing Resilience book. I, I hope you all got a chance to read up on that. And as well as, well, the Japanese families, the Japanese that have obviously, you know, experienced great, just a great impact, great trauma during World War II. And even now up into, just recently, you know, I want to mention the name of Alfred Diaz Infante, who played a big role in, you know, making this happen, you know? And in those conversations that we were having with the Big Sur Land Trust team, CCA, you know, and a story I remember hearing from the new executive director for CCA, how there was no place for the residents of La Posada to walk, that they, they just had to walk up and down their parking lot. And now, they have this beautiful Ensen community park. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mayor, miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Beatriz Garza. Soy promotora de salud con CCA por ya varios años. Parte de mi trabajo que me ha tocado realizar con CCA fue trabajar en este proyecto de Car Lake. Así lo conozco ya, ya le cambié el nombre, pero es Car Lake. Para mí, estuvimos tocando puertas desde el, desde el 2017, este, en la, en los apartamentos de La Posada, para ser posible este proyecto, tocando puertas y haciendo, este, todas las juntas. Como dijera la mayor, perdón, la concejal de La Rosa, yeah, finally, después de tanto tiempo, este proyecto se hizo realidad. So, muchas gracias y ojalá que consideren, este, adquirir este hermoso parque para nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. My name is Beatriz Garza, and I am a promotora de salud with CCA. I have worked there. And, and I also am part of the project of Car Lake. Well, that's how I know it. That's how I've been referring it to. 2017, I also was canvassing, knocking on doors, so the people from the Posada can, have meetings with them, so we can all approve this project. And as council member de La Rosa would say, yay, finally, we're able to make this a reality. So, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And please consider acquiring this beautiful park for the city.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. So, it's, it's, I didn't think this day was going to come, but it has come. So, I'm the executive director at the Center for Community Advocacy, but I also serve on the Big Sur Land Trust Board of Trustees. So, I, I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution that's before you. CCA has played a tremendous role in the last seven years on the community engagement aspect of it. From what you just heard, knocking on doors, getting people involved in town hall meetings, design phases, this is from residents designing, being at city council, having input on what that park is going to look like. And on top of that, you know, all the trees that were planted, flowers, they kept maintenance of that garden for, throughout the years, even during the pandemic. And so I think that there's a lot of love and responsibility that the community has for this park. I think one of the benefits has, is this, this will be an open classroom, right? It's an outdoor open classroom with environmental education that schools can come to and learn about the history, but also environmental aspect to it. Can we get future environmental scientists to come out of that? Like, what is, what is the workforce opportunity for people to think about those jobs and opportunities? A lot of it wouldn't have been happening without our volunteers and our residents from throughout the city of Salinas. Again, I think residents and the community has really played a role. But I also think that they will play a role in the maintenance and volunteering for those efforts through the Friends of. It's not just the contribution of funds, right? How do we really value the time and effort that people come and do in having maintenance of that park? And I think that's going to be, a lot of it, this wouldn't have happened without the support of many organizations, the residents and the city council. So, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right. We will come back to, I'm sorry, yes, any, anybody on Zoom? One person.
Iram Coronado, two minutes.
Hello again. My name's Iram Coronado, and I'm the reports and communications manager at Center for Community Advocacy. Just want to acknowledge that it's amazing to see the multi-generation of people from Salinas, right here at the city council, engaging and advocating for the beautification of Salinas. Also, this is a prime example to continue the name of the, to continue to impark in future buildings after the first people, the Alonee, Esalen, Kostanoean, what is now considered Monterey County. I hope the city sees a value in this park, as it took many years from gathering community inputs. And I encourage the city to look past a cutting of grass and move forward with this, with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Was that it? Patty on Zoom? Okay. We will come back, since, I'll, I'll start to my left. Any final comments?
Go ahead, Margaret.
I think it's all been said. I think everyone's excited about it. And I, I did forget to mention that I love the community input, because it is a park that is for the residents. It's what they designed, and it's very exciting. So, thrilled to be here to put an eye in for that.
Well, what can I say? I said everything. And again, I thank everybody for being here. We're going to see this happen in July, maybe, hopefully. But I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
We'll continue with comments before we vote. Anything else to reveal?
You know, I think I did hear from, from one or two council members that they were concerned about, about some of the, the maintenance costs. You know, I like to be forward-thinking. I mean, when the Big Sur Land Trust says that they were able to receive throughout the state of California a little bit over $35 million, I mean, that really speaks to the capacity that, that, that you have. As you know, a lot of that boils down to the relationships that the organization has, the vision that it has. And it wouldn't have been possible without having this property, right? Without taking, you know, the 17 years to get that, to get that commitment. And here we are. It's coming to fruition. And now it's our, our role to take, you know, our respective step and leadership role in, in maintaining, in maintaining this park. And so, as a council, that's a responsibility that, that we're, we're going to, we're going to take on. I hope that this really isn't the end. I hope this is really Espero que esto sea realmente más el comienzo de una relación a largo plazo. Creo en el poder de la filantropía. Y aquellos que no están familiarizados con el campo de la filantropía y lo que hace la filantropía, quiero decir, hay una oportunidad para nosotros crear un endowment para mantener el parque, ¿verdad? Quiero decir, queremos un parque que se usa. Y un parque que se usa, entonces sí, va a necesitar mantenimiento, va a necesitar reparación continua. Creo que si el Consejo de la Ciudad pudiera convencer y conseguir donadores para llegar a 35 millones, no veo cómo, no sería capaz de, en colaboración con otros, llegar a un fondo de endowment para la mantenimiento y a largo plazo la sustentabilidad del parque. Quiero decir, un endowment de 1 millón de dólares podría generar tal vez 120, 150 mil dólares al año, que podría llegar a pagar por el personal y probablemente algunos reparaciones menores. Así que absolutamente creo en el trabajo que hace el Consejo de la Ciudad. Y estoy emocionada de ver esto llegar a su floración.
Gracias. A mi derecha, miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad.
Y el increíble compromiso de la comunidad. Quiero decir, nunca he visto nada así. Muchos años atrás tuve la oportunidad de unirme a una reunión en Sherwood Hall. Y estaba sentado allí y vi todos estos planes presentados. Y luego vi todos estos diferentes componentes del parque. Y luego pensé, ¿qué es esto? Porque típicamente, en ese momento, muchas veces verías aquí nuestros planes. ¿Sabes? ¿Qué crees? Esto es lo que vamos a hacer. Pero en ese momento fue como, no, póngalo donde quieras que esté. Y luego después de eso hubo una decisión cohesiva de grupo sobre qué cosas iban a ser dónde. Estaba como, ¿qué es esto? Así que, ya sabes, la juventud aquí, ya sabes, a Angelo y a Miss Valeria, probablemente representen, probablemente digo 2% de la juventud involucrada en este proyecto. Quiero decir, ha habido, estoy dispuesto a decir miles de personas involucradas en este proceso. Sabes, como miembro del Consejo, es mi responsabilidad tratar de asegurar que mantenemos el parque, para levantar esas preocupaciones, para que tengamos un plan para adelante. Pero debido al compromiso de la comunidad, porque, ya sabes, estoy seguro de que aquellas personas que están tocando puertas invertirán en la mantenimiento de este parque. Creo que para Mariann, quiero asegurarme de que llegue a la primera fila. Así que ese es mi pedazo de solicitud para estar allí. Pero, ya sabes, esto ha creado una parceria histórica. No quiero que te pases el baton a nosotros, quiero que te holdas un poco, solo mientras obtenemos algunas cosas claras. Pero solo quiero decir que este es un proyecto increíble. Me animo a apoyarlo y a buscar esas soluciones creativas para mantenerlo y hacer que, como dijo Gloria de la Rosa, un gemelo de Salinas. Gracias.
Gracias. Tony.
Sí, señor Donahue. Quiero también decir gracias a Mariann Warden. Mariann, a veces puedes sentirte como si nadie sabe lo que estás haciendo, pero tus huellas son por toda la ciudad. Has hecho mucho, has sido un piloto de tránsito. Y con suerte cuando no podamos llegar a ese barco, quiero empujar a tu barco allí. Sí, lo veremos. Quiero decir gracias a Miss Rachel Saunders. Miss Rachel Saunders, ¿estás aquí? ¿Por favor, señora Sanders? Para mí, esta mujer ha sido el pulgar de corazón de esta operación. Cada vez, recuerdo cuando Alfred Diaz Infante... Entiendo que haya un tránsito para Alfred Diaz Infante. Recuerdo cuando Alfred Diaz Infante me llamó, Tony, nos gustaría presentar una idea. Y usted estaba allí, nos conocimos en su oficina. Había otras personas también. Y cada vez que escuché que hablabas de este proyecto, podía sentir tu pasión, tu visión. Y como personas como tú y como miembro del Consejo en el cual se dice, han habido miles de personas. El Sr. Estrada dice que hay personas que han estado plantando flores y agua por los árboles y las plantas, y he visto eso. Así que hay muchas personas, muchos interesados. Pero has estado en algunas reuniones críticas, poniendo todo junto. Realmente lo has hecho. Y lo digo. Y recuerdo cuando estábamos en el Chery Bean, Barrera, ¿podemos llegar a un millón de dólares? Y dije, oh, Dios mío, todo lo que tengo es 10 dólares en mi bolsillo. Pero mira, este Consejo llegó. Quiero agradecer a mis antiguos colegas también, los que no están aquí con nosotros. Y al mismo tiempo quiero agradecer a Miss Jeanette de Big Sur Land Trust, la CEO de Big Sur Land Trust. Este es un gran proyecto y queremos asegurarnos de que prospera. Y quiero agradecer a todas las personas aquí porque cada uno de ustedes ha tenido algo que ver con ello. Así que queremos agradeceros por eso. Y, señor Callahan, como has oído hoy, alguien te dio un agradecimiento. Sabes, a veces los agradecimientos no se pueden comprar, esos son... Y sabes qué, usted hace mucho trabajo pesado para esta ciudad. Y quiero agradeceros. Su trabajo es muy difícil, pero lo hace parecer muy fácil. Y quiero agradeceros por mantenernos legales. Y gracias por sus buenos actos.
Jose.
Muy bien, solo unos cuantos comentarios rápidos. Primero, quiero agradecer al personal y al Consejo de la Ciudad por su cooperación en mover este proyecto adelante. Esto es realmente no solo una inversión ahora, pero como has mencionado, dada la línea de tiempo del proyecto y, ya sabes, la longevidad y la visión a largo plazo de ello, es realmente una inversión para el futuro de Salinas, ¿verdad? Acabo de convertirme en un tío en diciembre. Y estoy emocionado de, ya sabes, tener a mis nietos y nietas, ya sabes, tener la oportunidad de ver este parque desarrollarse. Ya sabes, eventualmente los llevaré allí y, ya sabes, pasaré ese cuidado a ellos y construir ese sentido de comunidad y, ya sabes, también equitativo con el proyecto. También quiero tocar potenciales para otras asociaciones de comunidad. Hay una escuela de bachillerato inmediatamente junto a ella, ¿verdad? Así que mientras desarrollamos un Consejo de Juventud, creo que esta es una buena oportunidad para lograr que nuestra juventud esté involucrada. Especialmente mientras, ya sabes, como consejo impulsamos a incluir más participación de la comunidad. Tenemos, creo que una población de edad mediana de menos de 30 años. Tenemos una población realmente joven, ¿verdad? Así que estoy realmente emocionado de que, ya sabes, no solo nosotros, sino futuras generaciones, disfruten de este proyecto. Y también espero abordar otros potenciales problemas de seguridad de los paseos. Es un downer en este, pero la Ruta Natividad es una rueda muy transitada, ¿verdad? Y hay accidentes constantes, ya sea vehicular o accidentes o accidentes contra los paseos. Just about a week or two ago, había un individuo que fue atrapado y golpeado, ya sabes, en la Ruta Natividad. Especialmente dado que está junto a una escuela. Solo estoy preocupado por, ya sabes, cuáles son nuestros planes para abordar esa seguridad de los paseos. Estoy seguro de que los residentes en los alrededores adjacentes y circundantes realmente aprecian esto. Si caminan esos alrededores, no hay parques. Incluso dentro de los complejos de apartamento, los parques y el espacio abierto son muy mínimos. Así que esto realmente proporciona una oportunidad para muchos de esos miembros de la comunidad caminar y disfrutar de algún espacio abierto.
Eso es todo. Gracias. Bien. El único comentario que haré, ya sabes, Mariann, en los años 60, mi padre fue el director de recreación de esta comunidad durante 30 años. Y cuando retiró en algún momento en los años 80. Y él también es el único director de recreación responsable de los cascos, pero eso es otra conversación. Su mayor resentimiento fue que Car Lake no se terminara. Así que eso es lo largo que ha estado pasando. Y esa era la era donde había planes para ponches y barcos de bate y eso tipo de cosas. Pero hemos tenido un gran resultado, pero creo que es interesante notar cuánto tiempo la comunidad ha estado trabajando en este proyecto. Y al final, a la opinión del consejero Sandoval, realmente tomó la comunidad toda para finalmente unir eso junto. Y creo, ya sabes, creo que eso es una base real de la optimismo. Estoy bastante seguro de que vamos a resolver el aspecto de la mantenimiento. Pero, ya sabes, creo que... Solo quería... Mi padre estaría molesto conmigo si no mencionara que hemos estado tratando durante mucho tiempo. Y gracias al Consejo de la Ciudad y a la comunidad entera que se unieron para finalmente hacerlo. Lo otro que compartiré con el público, a menudo veo a Mariann en la iglesia y no tiene limitación de dos minutos. Lo que siempre disfruto porque entonces podemos elaborar. Así que, Mariann, te veré en la iglesia y我会llorar muy, muy duro para que obtengas ese... Que obtengas esa posibilidad de primera fila porque no vas a ir a ningún lugar. Así que con eso, parece que... Tengo una motion y un segundo ya, y parece que estamos listos para ir.
Miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad.
Sí.
Miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad.
Sí.
Miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad.
Sí.
Miembro de La Rosa.
Sí.
Miembro de Salazar.
Sí.
Miembro de Sandoval.
Sí.
Mayor Donahue. Motion passes.
Bien, arrancamos la mesa. Bien, como deberíamos. Y gracias a todos nuestros jóvenes residentes que aparecen. Appreciamos su input. Muy bien. Muy bien. Bueno, seguimos, así que el dinero no va a parar. Porque tenemos que hacer una revisión de presupuesto de medio año. Y sospecho que Selena Andrews está aquí en algún lugar en el edificio. Ahí está.
Gracias. Buenas noches, al Mayor, a miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad, Selena Andrews, directora financiera. El item antes de ti es el presupuesto de medio año de la década de 2024 y solicitudes de apropiación complementaria. La recomendación de hoy es que el Consejo de la Ciudad recibiera el reporte de presupuesto de medio año y autorice las ajustes presupuestarias que, A, vamos a pasar más tarde en la presentación. El anual presupuesto adoptado es un plan financiero predicho sobre la mejor información financiera disponible en el momento en que se prepara. Como cualquier presupuesto, sin embargo, las condiciones cambian y crea la necesidad de modificar ese plan. La administración de la ciudad ha designado el mes de verano como el momento adecuado para realizar una revisión comprehensive del presupuesto y el presupuesto de mes de verano como vehículo para la consideración de cualquier revisión. Para preparar el informe, el oficio de administración y el departamento de finanzas de la ciudad trabajaron con todos los departamentos de la ciudad para analizar el estado del presupuesto. Basado en ese análisis, hemos identificado las recomendaciones de ajustes presupuestarias. Como parte de la revisión de mes de verano, preparamos un modelo de pronóstico financiero. El pronóstico es importante porque ayuda a identificar futuras tendencias de ingresos y excedentes de explotación que pueden influir en las políticas, objetivos estratégicos y servicios de la comunidad. También ayuda a cuantificar el impacto de potenciales brechas de ingresos. El año actual está incluido en el modelo para ilustrar la progresión de los ingresos y excedentes. El brecha identificada aquí refleja las apropiaciones del Consejo a través de la primera mitad del año. Potencial revenue de Amazon está incluido a partir de 2026-27 y continúa a través de los años de fuera. Trabajamos con nuestro asesor financiero y investigamos otras instalaciones comparables para llegar a estas proyecciones de ingresos conservadores. Las dos columnas últimos son ambos 2030 y 31. Una columna muestra ingresos con la medida G y la otra sin ella. Como pueden ver, habrá un brecha significativa si la medida G no se extiende más allá de 2030-31. Esto claramente ilustra la importancia de iniciar la conversación sobre la medida G este año. Trabajar en renovar o extender esta fuente de ingresos necesita comenzar temprano para estar listo para la elección preliminar de 2026. El personal también está revisando potenciales nuevos ingresos y oportunidades de mejora de los ingresos para una posible consideración futura del Consejo. Aquí hay algunos ejemplos. TOT, Propiedad Transferida Tax, UUT, CFD, que es el Distrito de Facilidades de la Comunidad. En mi opinión, este es un reporte muy positivo. Los fondos operativos generalmente están performando como esperado, con algunas excepciones. Mientras hay incertidumbre, la mayoría de indicadores son relativamente positivos a través de la primera mitad del año y el crecimiento moderado se espera en el futuro. Los ajustes presupuestarios son recomendados en los fondos operativos. La ciudad está relativamente bien posicionada entrando en el presupuesto de 2025-26. Solo un rápido update de las condiciones económicas. Como mostrado en este gráfico, hay un patrón claro que muestra un aumento de empleo en los meses de primavera y verano. La tasa de desempleo en diciembre de 2024 es baja, es menor que el año anterior por 0.7% en el mismo mes. La actividad real estate está mostrando que el número de transacciones ha disminuido desde 2024... Lo siento, desde 2022. Hubo 665 ventas en 2022 y 554 en 2024, probablemente debido al impacto de los aumentos de los tasos de hipotecas. Sin embargo, debido a la falta de oferta, el precio medio de las casas también ha aumentado. No tantas ventas, pero los precios de la vivienda continúan a subir. Y Abe presentará el evaluación general de fondos y recomendaciones. Gracias.
Buenas noches, consejo, A. Pedrosa, acting assistant finance director. En mirar específicamente los fondos generales, que incluyen medidas E y G, el ingreso durante los primeros seis meses está tendiendo a ritmo con las proyecciones y no se ha anticipado significativamente a exceder los niveles presupuestarios hasta el 30 de junio. Actualmente estamos a 53% recibidos en el punto de media en el año fiscal, como detallado en el informe de personal. En el 31 de diciembre, los excedentes también están siguiendo a ritmo con limites a no gastar. De hecho, antes de que se transfieran, estamos a 50% gastados en los primeros seis meses del año y 52% gastados en general. De nuevo, los detalles están proporcionados en el informe de personal. Como parte de la acción recomendada, se solicitan apropiaciones de mes de verano a este tiempo. Y los resultados preliminares inauditos del año fiscal de 24 estiman un minor aumento en el balance de fondos que puede ser usado para balancear el presupuesto de mes de verano de 25-26. siguiente slide. Aquí están las apropiaciones complementarias a los fondos generales que el personal recomienda, totalizando 727,000. Una posición especialista en forense dentro del Departamento de Policía. La cantidad mostrada es el costo totalmente cargado para un cuarto del año fiscal. Reemplazo de maestros y necesidades de tecnología para la administración de la unidad de fire debido a la remodelación de la puerta de la ciudad del west wing. Aumento de capacidad para los control de plan de fire, reparaciones de hidrante, y anticipado mantenimiento de vehículos debido a la cerradura temporal de la estación de fire 1. Siguiente, adquisición de material compost para estar en compliance con SB 1383, que pertenece a productos de basura orgánica, servicios profesionales relacionados con el auditorio de las Servicios Republicanos y a aumento de capacidad en el contrato de forestación urbana para ambas, árboles y paisajes. Y, finalmente, para suplemento el presupuesto de contingencia para necesidades programadas urgentes a través del resto del año fiscal. Eso concluye nuestra presentación. El personal está disponible para preguntas. Gracias.
Miss Salina, realmente apreciaba tu informe. Y hablando con el administrador de la ciudad, estaba un poco curioso. Continúo escuchando que hay muchos... tickets que... ¿Es LAZ un acrónimo de algo? ¿O es el nombre del negocio? LAZ, L-A-Z.
Es el nombre del vendedor y es en... puede ser un acrónimo, no estoy completamente segura, pero es el vendedor.
Sí, así que la LAZ... ¿Alguien tiene alguna idea? Bien, así que Barrera obtiene un ticket de LAZ, pago. Con ese ticket, ¿cuánto dinero queda en Salinas?
Así que...
Y perdona, pero mi pregunta es, estoy tratando de averiguar dónde en este informe, en los ingresos, ¿dónde se muestra? No sé si está en los fondos de servicio interno, así que no sé. Otro ingreso. No sé dónde está.
Así que solo para responder a tu pregunta, LAZ, no sé si es acrónimo o no, pero es el nombre del empresa, LAZ. Realmente distribuyen tickets. Cuando pagas tu ticket, una porción va al condado, una porción va al tribunal, una porción va al agente de recepción. Creo que está en el rango de 10 a 12 dólares que regresa a la ciudad, pero tendré que verificar eso.
Cuando hablé con LAZ, dijeron que los tickets están en los miles. Así que, pero siempre estaba pensando, bueno, podemos encontrar eso. Yo solo estaría curioso en tu informe dónde estaría ese dinero. Y en los mismos términos, señor Jacobs, el impuesto a la cannabis... And down those same lines, Mr. Jacobs, the cannabis tax. I, I, I know it's not as much as we projected that it was going to be. Any idea here in your report where, where that would be at?
That is correct. The cannabis is, is, is lower. We projected 1.3 million, budgeted 1.3 million this year, but we don't think we're going to get there. So that's going to be lower.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate your report, but on the, when you say other revenue, can you give me just maybe a couple of examples, what other revenue is? Because that's eight million dollars, which is awesome.
I don't have a lot of desk space here, but I can, I can get that information.
And, and you know what? I think what I want to do next time is, I did talk to the city manager. What I'm going to do is I'm going to send my questions beforehand that way, and I apologize for that. But yeah, I just had some specific questions, but... Oh, thank you, sir.
Yes, so that's include, that includes investment earnings, business license, and permitting fees. That's in other revenues.
So, so as is, and my last question. With this report, do you think fiscally we're doing well? The city's doing good right now?
So we, we did adopt a balanced budget, but as we, as we, as we shared the prior, when we were working on the budget and adopted it, there, there are some funding needs in the out-years. And the fact that we have that doesn't, also means that we don't have a structural budget.
Yes.
We're managing to, to balance it, but we're having to employ various budget balancing strategies. So that is something that we absolutely need to work towards.
And, and, well, my last question here. Mr. Mendez, being that Measure G is going to sunset, what, is it in five years? Am I right on that? We're working on plans right now to market this.
Yes. The short answer to your question is yes. We're starting to have the conversation. We'll be bringing some recommendations, some thoughts to the council.
Yeah.
Probably sometime before, right after the budget, we'll start having, really leaning into the strategy for Measure G.
Yes.
And updating reports and so forth.
Yeah.
And where is the cannabis revenue reflected?
That would be in, in other revenues.
Correct, right.
Yeah. Thank you.
I had a few questions particularly pertaining to revenue enhancement opportunities, starting with TOT, the transient occupancy tax. How much of an impact does the H2A housing have, like, H, use of H2A, sorry, let me rephrase this. The use of local motels and hotels for H2A housing? How does that impact how much we're collecting in terms of TOT?
So, long stays don't have to pay TOT, longer stays. So that would probably not have an impact on TOT directly.
Okay. And do we have a hotel incentives program to kind of increase that source of revenue in particular that you are aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We don't have any hotel incentive programs.
Okay. And then as it pertains to Measure G, if this were to fail in 2026, what are some of the fiscal impacts that, or considerations that the council would have to consider moving into the transition to 2030?
Thank you for the question. So there, there is a $45 million shortfall if we don't have Measure G in 2030, '31. We would have to start planning for that now, or we'd start planning for it soon if that we're not going to be renewed, if we thought it was not going to be renewed.
So, to the mayor and council, bottom line is, if we're not successful in 2026, we're going to have to start pumping the brakes and really planning for what do we do to adjust. We'll probably have another run at 2028, but, you know, I think we have to, time is going to be our ally to sort of be able to measure it over a four-year span as opposed to just a sudden cut, you know, in 2030, '31.
In terms of franchise fees, there's mention and note of a few particular industries and service areas, such as audio, video, and other categories. Are there other business activities within the city of Salinas that could potentially have a franchise fee instead of the business license tax?
They're actually very specific to these types of services. So, no.
And is it solely limited to that, or could we possibly explore? I know we have car rental facilities over at the airport, but I don't believe we charge a franchise fee for that. Is that correct?
You know, I, I am, I don't, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Chris Keller. I don't believe we do.
Okay. So this one's not so much a question, but more so a comment. I'd be interested in exploring what additional revenue could be generated from potentially exploring a franchise fee on, on that particular area of service, since pretty much, if you noticed over the past few years, all the car rental companies have consolidated at, you know, Salinas Airport. And that's probably for a reason, right? So just be interested in seeing what that revenue increase might look like.
Thank you.
In terms of, in the staff report, there is mention of the RDA residual apportionment, the redevelopment agency. How much more is left of that, and how much longer can we foresee the city continuing to receive those funds?
That's a great question. I actually don't have the specifics on that today, but I can get that information for you.
Thank you. And this is just from my knowledge. What is a motor, motor vehicle and loofah?
The motor vehicle and loofah is the registration fees that you pay when you go register a vehicle that you purchased.
As for the educational revenue augmentation fund, there's mention of how whenever a supplemental amount is collected, it gets deviated back up between the, you know, receiving agencies, I want to say. This year, was there any supplemental revenue generated from that particular fund? And is that a tax, or is that a partial tax? How is that collected or calculated?
So that's a, it's going to take a little bit of time to explain that, so I can absolutely get that information to you. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And then one last question pertaining, just because SB 1383 was mentioned, what was the dollar amount that was proposed to be increased? And I bring that up because me, along with a few other council members on the dais, serve on the Solid Waste Authority Board, and the number sounded very different from what we were presented to last week as to what the city's obligation would be. I just want to confirm what that number is.
Okay, and that's, you're referring to the appropriation?
Correct.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, so we're asking for additional $67,000 for those organic purchases. I know the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority is looking at actually funding that in the future, but these costs are for this year, once the grant money run out, ran out, we have to pay for those organic purchases.
Yeah, because from the presentation that we received last Thursday, the dollar amount that the city of Salinas in specific is being asked to pay is actually the sum of $256,000, and $256,096.
Right. And, and what, what happened is, is they prorated that. So the first year of 1383, we were only, we only had to buy 30% of the organics, and that was paid for by a grant. The next year, it went up to 50%, and that was also paid by a grant. And then this year was 100%, and it was partially paid by a grant, and this is the remainder amount that we need to pay.
Again, just from our understanding from what we were presented at the previous meeting, the cost of $256,000 isn't actually for the whole calendar year. It's just from basically now February through June.
It's actually for the next fiscal year. It's not for, for this fiscal year. This is, this is the supplement to, to pay for the organics for this fiscal year, and then Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority is wanting to take it over, which would be the $260,000 for the next fiscal year.
Okay, I'll have to revisit that on that. And then just one last question on sales tax and what's collected. How much, what percentage of online sales tax do we, of purchases made online, do we as a city get to collect?
I don't have the exact percentage with me, but I can get you that information. We work with a sales tax consultant, meet with them quite regularly, and we can check in on that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks for your report. I appreciate it.
Sorry about that. So anytime I see brackets, I get nervous, right? That's nothing, that's not something that we want to see, but I, I appreciate your honesty and your transparency that we will make sure that we balance everything out. So we've got some work to do. I just have one question on the recommended supplemental appropriations to the general funds. So if you can just give me like a little rundown, like what is potential urgent program needs? What would, like, what would be considered in that $178,000?
So the city generally includes any, a dollar figure for potential, for programming needs that may come up after the budget is adopted, and that's generally about $500,000, $400,000. So right now, it's about $400,000, and so we want us, we've been using it as needed, and so we want to replenish that so that the money is available should something come up that we didn't plan for at budget adoption or today.
Kind of that other category, right?
It is, it is.
I mean, I think the rest of the, the numbers seem very reasonable, so I'm not alarmed by any of that, but thank you for your clarification.
One last thing, any unused monies there? We'll go back to the fund balance.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll use it again if it's not needed.
Thank you.
City budget stuff is always fun and entertaining, right? No, I, I think what I would be most interested in is in terms of what we might be able to do as a city in terms of, you know, generating revenue and continuing to examine existing fees that we have, and if it's proportionate with other city and county, similar jurisdictions. I know most people don't like the, the T-word, they don't like taxes, but at the end of the day, when it comes to public services like police, fire, public works, addressing our roads, our streets, our sidewalks, which we've continued to hear over these last couple of city council meetings, I think it's something that, that most people will continue, well, would, would continue to support, as long as it's transparent, they know what they're investing in. I like police and fire, and I like, I like having, see our, our cities' streets clean and sidewalks level. I do understand that there's also a cost behind it, and if there's anything that we can do as residents to continue to support that, I, I think that, that does need to be part of our long-term fiscal responsibility and, you know, letting residents know, it's like, this is what we're asking for, and this is how it's going to be used. No questions, just comment.
Very good. All right, thank you. We will be back for final comments from council. But first, we'll head out to the public. Any, any public comment on this? Any, is there anyone on, who's the one who wants to come in?
None on the other, mayor.
Very good. Back to council for comments. All right, council member Samuel.
Yeah, you know, this is not a fun topic when we have to make up some revenue. I just want to say, you know, I understand that services are crucial, but I think we're missing some key opportunities to collect on some of the revenues that may be owed to the city of Salinas. You know, my colleague, Councilman Barra, has kind of brought something up that, something Mayor Kimble brought up, which is a tax on, on our rental car industry. I'm not sure how significant that would be, if it'd be worth taking a look at. But one thing we didn't see in here, which I think it was with the support of Councilor Barrera, was looking at how much the ag industry contributes to our, our tax base. So I'll request that information from you. I know that there was support in the past to consider a tax on agriculture, to see what that looks like. I know there may be some models in the wine industry. I think before we ask our constituents and residents of Salinas for additional tax money, we should ensure that we look at all options for revenue. I don't, I don't, I mean, we all know that big trucks, you know, go through our neighborhoods and damage our roads and infrastructure, use our police department, and it's important to know if they're contributing to those services that they're utilizing or the roads that they're damaging. So just a reminder, and that we should capture revenue that doesn't just come from residents, you know? And I just keep thinking back to our negotiation with the public services, where we negotiated away some of the revenue that could have probably covered some of the budget shortfall. So I just want us to be cognizant of, without putting a bigger impact on residents where we collect revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Andrews, thank you for this report. And Mr. Mendez, I, I believe that we're onto something good here. There is revenue that we can get. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about the, what's the building, 65 West Alisal? What's in there? Do you know that, mayor? What, what department do we have in there? Huh? Permit Center is a goldmine. I mean, but, but it, we need to figure out how we can create revenue, because there's revenue there as well, and I, I think to Mr. Mendez's point, as he's putting a staff together, I always like to hear, if you hire staff and they bring good investment, then it's worth it. But if we're just going to hire people, just to hire people, we don't want that. But I think as we focus on the revenue that the Permit Center can bring in, we need to really focus on staffing there and, and then other areas. I don't know the, you, you folks are the professionals, we're here to support you, but, but I think there's areas where we can bring more revenue. I hate taxes. I, I wouldn't want to bring a tax to the people, but I would like to see all of our, the avenues, the resources that we have within the city right now. We have professionals who, I'm looking at one right in front of us right now, professionals that can help us on how the city can bring in revenue. But thank you for the report. And when we're ready, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Well, I'll second that motion. But first and foremost, thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to seeing the follow-up to some of those questions. As we look towards the future, definitely want to plant the seed that, you know, as it relates to like personal finance, when it comes, when it comes to working with a limited budget, right? There's typically a few different avenues that people tend to take, right? We either stop, start analyzing at what we're spending, and, you know, start cutting back on certain things, which I think at this point as a city is not necessarily the best idea. We need to increase services and, you know, increase our capacity. And, you know, moving towards the future, really looking at opportunities to, again, increase revenues in a sustainable manner, diversifying our economic base, and just overall changing our mentality from kind of having, living in this constant cycle of, I guess, for lack of better terms at this moment, kind of poverty, right? I want us to look ahead at the future and think of prosperity, right? How can we not only increase our revenues, but leave ourselves in a better position, right? We still have an unfunded liability with our CalPERS pension, and that's, you know, a liability that's going to be carried on to younger generations. So to the extent possible and feasible, without being detrimental to industry, the industries that support our economic base, that, you know, provide jobs, that provide healthcare, that provide retirement plans. And we're cognizant of that, and, you know, just working towards increasing our revenue so that we are able to meet the needs and expectations of the community. Thank you.
Well, I would say one of the things that our, our council's been pretty unanimous about is economic development, and really needed to boost that up. So I think we're all in support of that, because we know that we need to increase our revenue. I did attend an all-staff meeting that Mr. Mendez had with his staff, and I love the, the spirit of really encouraging people to step forward with innovative ideas, because it's the people that have the boots on the ground that are going to be able to come up with the best solutions on how to increase revenue, decrease costs. So I appreciate him making the effort to do that, and I think that will produce some great results. So I'm cautiously optimistic. Thank you.
Really, any final comments? We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Uh, no further comments. Thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa, absent. Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, very good. Thank you. And with that, we're going to get studious. We're going to stop considering and study something. We are going to look for Monica, who, I haven't seen you in a while. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Good evening, Mayor Donahue and councilmembers. Last item. I just wanted to give a quick disclaimer. We had a little bit of a glitch with the staff report, but it should be on, online now. So again, good evening. I'm excited to be here today to talk about the East Area Specific Plan, the last piece of the future growth area puzzle, as I like to think of it. So first, I will share a bit about the project background and the plan's importance. Then I will share an update on the project status, past and future community engagement, current developer interest, and we'll close with the current project timeline. Now, we can't talk about the East Area without first looking at the future growth area in its entirety, so also known as the FGA or the North of Beranda area. In 2008, this large portion of land was annexed into the city and was divided into three sections, the West Area, the Central Area, and the East Area. And to be consistent with our general plan, the development of specific plans for each of these sections was the next step to consider future development. Given this planned requirement, or general plan requirement, excuse me, three specific plans were created or have been created so far and adopted. A section of the West Area was carved out for a commercial development, which is known as the Gateway Center, and this was adopted in 2011, followed by the West Area in 2019 and the Central Area in 2020, leaving the East Area as the final specific plan to be completed. Now, it's important to mention, this is not our first attempt at exploring an East Area plan. An initial effort was Explorer in the mid 2000s, but did not move forward due to the economic downturn in 2008. After somewhat of a pause, in 2023, we released a, a request for proposal for planning services for the preparation and entitlement for this plan, and Placeworks was selected as the primary consultant, and work began in early 2024. Now, before I share more details on this project, it's important to highlight the why behind this process. So specific plans serve a little bit like a general plan for these underdeveloped areas. They help establish a vision and policies to guide development. They help identify the type, location, and intensity of land uses. And in the case of the East Area, it's setting these parameters for largely underdeveloped agricultural land with low-density housing and environmental condition, which include natural drainage areas, existing oak woodland, and surrounding foothills. Overall, specific plans serve as a bridge between the general plan policies and development on the ground and helps set a tangible vision for our city. Now, it's important to take a step back and expand on the role of our city's general plan as we discuss the future of the East Area. As you all know, the general plan sets the stage for our city's overall growth and development, as well as outlines the goals, policies, and actions all our departments will follow for the next 15 to 20 years, or potentially beyond that. The good news is we are currently at the tail end of our general plan update process. It's good news because these, these updates don't happen often. Our current general plan update process kicked off in 2021, and it is the first comprehensive update since 2002. The East Area Specific Plan is currently being developed to be consistent with the vision, goals, and policies included in this current update. And again, it is important for this process because the general plan serves as our guiding document, and specific plans, like the one we're discussing today, help bring the big goals and ideas into tangible actions. The general plan update process has covered key topics like housing, land use, public safety, conservation, and open space circulation, among others. And exploring these topics and leveraging the ongoing general plan activities such as technical studies, build-out projections, traffic, traffic patterns, and community engagement has helped foster a more cohesive and efficient planning process. We're also bringing new concepts to the table, like the new place type designations, which I'll expand on a little bit later. The way I like to look at it is we have the general plan, which is our big guiding document with a big vision, and then we have the specific plan, which is kind of like a little general plan that helps us get into the nitty-gritty of future development. So now, back to the start of the show, the East Area Specific Plan process kicked off in February 2024 with the help of our consultants from Placeworks. Engagement efforts kicked off with focused discussions with property owners and developers. So far, we've had two online stakeholder meetings and one community open house, and have developed an area profile, land use alternatives, and a preferred concept plan. Both the land use alternatives and the preferred concept plan were developed with the help of property owners, community members, and interested stakeholders. The first community-wide open house was held on August 15th last year at, at the Cesar Chavez Library and was attended by over 70 community members, property owners, representatives from the community organizations, and other agency representatives. This open house focused on gathering feedback on preferred housing types, commercial development, open space, and community design options, circulation features, and different land use alternatives. Now, the preferred alternative, which I previously mentioned, and you can see on the screen there, outlines potential land use designations and is based on the general plan's new place type categories, and was developed using feedback from the initial focus group, the community-wide open house, and discussions with city staff from community development, library and community services, public works, and the fire department. These place types are our new land use designations, which allow more room for flexibility and imagination than the more traditional land use designations that we currently have. These place types, which again are carried over from the general plan, are more intentional than the traditional land use designations by taking into account key elements that shape a community's character. The way I like to think of it is we are adding a little bit of flavor to our neighborhoods and community, so not just thinking about creating mixed-use developments, but how these developments fit into the neighborhood fabric, for example. It's bringing key factors like public space, transportation options, and architectural style. The idea is to help establish a sense of place, for lack of a better word. The ultimate goal is to create neighborhoods where people want to live and where they feel happy and safe. While the East Area is limited in terms of land uses, it will include a good blend of residential, along with some commercial space, civic space, which includes four schools, and parks and green space. And here, here you can see some examples of some of our new designations, some place types I'd like to highlight. We introduced a new place type, the hillside neighborhood, which is two to six units per acre and serves as a buffer to the existing hillside and provides a lower density option to the, to the traditional neighborhood. And another, other place types to highlight here are the centrally located mixed-use village and neighborhood center along the major streets to enhance accessibility and encourage walkability in the community. Now, very exciting, we already have developer interest here. Parallel to our East Area planning process, we have had developers interested in getting the work started. The proposed development, known as Barton Ranch, is located northeast of Beranda Road between Ryder and Williams Road, and proposes the development of 852 units, of which 15% or 128 units would be restricted for affordable housing, plus land dedicated for parks and open space. No commercial or industrial development is planned within this project. The concept for the proposed Barton Ranch development dates back to the early 2000s, when the East Area Specific Plan was first discussed. Typically, these developments need to happen after a specific plan has been adopted. However, recent state law, SB 330, allow for these projects to move forward before a specific plan has been established. The Barton Ranch application is currently undergoing tentative map application review, and staff are working with the applicant to determine the proposal's consistency with the city's adopted ordinances, plans, and development regulations, as well as determining the, what level of California Environmental Quality Act analysis needs to be done, along with the supporting technical, technical studies that are needed. So here is a visual of the draft concept, a little bit of a sneak peek of what the development can look like. Again, this is a draft concept, so there's, it could potentially change, but we wanted you to see it, and we will have more on this project as it progresses. So back to our timeline, taking a quick look at our past efforts and work ahead, we will be convening our second community meeting this spring and also releasing a draft for public review. We will be following along with the general plan and EIR review process this summer, and if the planning gods are good to us, we will be able to, to come back and wrap everything up and bring this forward for adoption the end of 2025. And we're happy to hear your comments and take questions. And the developers also here, I'm not sure if they're able to answer questions as well.
Start to my left.
I'm still processing.
Okay.
That's a lot, you're like a fast talker. I like you.
I want to get you to dinner.
You know, I have a lot of fast talkers on staff. I'll be careful of that. Are there any, while Margaret's processing?
No, 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 thank you. Yes, thank you for giving me a flashback to the Monterey County Planning Commission meetings, which were eight hours long, and so that's something I was avoiding. No, no, very, very informative, very exciting to see our, our future growth areas and what those are, are gonna look like as those projects continue to come in. You know, we'll, we'll see those go through the, through the process. As I think a lot of us heard this evening and these last couple of meetings, residents are really asking and looking for housing, affordable housing, mixed-use housing, and so I wish we could really build it a lot quicker, but I know that these things do take time, and those residents that have come to our city council meetings, again, expressing their concern for, for housing and meeting our housing needs. Housing, it's, it's on its way. The one thing that does come up to mind as, as we kind of look at these kind of future growth area plans is, one thing that I'm also particularly interested in is, is meeting our population growth, right? I served on the US Complete Census Count, I think, three times, I think two, might have been 2000, 2010, 2020, and the city of Salinas continues to grow pretty steadily. There's a couple of cities along the peninsula that have either remained steady. I think there's one city that may have declined like half a percent or 1%. But one, one of my biggest fears and, as a council member, is when I look to our county immediately north of us, San Bernardino County and Santa Clara County, having seen them do a lot of bridge line development and really kind of, kind of build out, and seeing them make inroads into San Bernardino County and watching their population growth, one thing that I want to make sure that we do is that we're also kind of meeting our, one, our, our own kind of natural population growth, and then two, population growth that is going to come from Silicon Valley, because it's, it's very obvious that they're making inroads in on San Bernardino County, Monterey County. I haven't had time to look into Santa Cruz County and what that impact has been there, but I'm sure that they're, they're going through the same thing. But thank you for today's presentation.
Before I go to council, we can continue with questions. I do want to give the applicant, if they want the option, a chance to speak for a few minutes. Would you prefer to hear from them before we continue questions? Just follow through with questions. Whatever you prefer, fine. Oh, your mic is not on, Mayor.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I'll do that during public comment. All right, we will continue with questions and then we'll invite the applicant up. So am I right?
All right. We answered a lot of my questions, but I do have a few. What are potentially some of the consistencies or inconsistencies of the Beranda Ranch project with the current general plan as proposed versus the general plan update?
The, the Barton Ranch, the development we talked about? So that one would be, would follow the, our current general plan?
Yep. And then what, what exactly would be inconsistent, given the, I know we're still a ways away from, you know, finalizing and hopefully knock on wood the...
So we have been working with the developer to, to try and really bring in a lot of their, their concepts and ideas for their development and bring them into, it's the perfect opportunity, right? We're working on this, on the land use designation, so there's really that opportunity to work together, but they wouldn't be following what we end up adopting from this plan.
Then have any developers, aside from the Beranda Road Ranch project developer, expressed interest in potentially developing the East Area specific?
We've heard from one other, from one other developer.
Just out of curiosity, is it primarily to develop the residential component or the potential commercial component?
Just residential for now.
Okay.
It's primarily residential, and I didn't mention the figure, but we're looking at anywhere from like 4,300 to 6,000 units for the area. And that means if we're, for the affordable housing, if we go with the middle of the road, 15% from our inclusionary housing ordinance, it would be like 600 to 900 units, something like that. Of affordable housing.
Is it...
Potentially, not, not promising.
And then my last question, is a community facilities district being considered for the East Area Specific Plan?
I'm not, I'm not too sure about that one. I don't know if you're... So we're working on a financial analysis, so that will be coming up.
Thank you.
Ms. Gutimilan, good to see you.
Likewise.
Did you say one of the property owners is here?
Mm-hmm.
Is that Barton Ranch?
Yes.
Let, let me ask you, in your report, you're talking about an 852 housing unit. Can you just share with the public, because out of those, 852, there's 128 units that are going to be affordable? Can you, because sometimes there's a misunderstanding on what affordable means. Can you just share with the public, what, because some people think it's low-income housing?
Right.
But if it's, your, your report says there's going to be 128 units, affordable units.
Of affordable. Are you asking like the different ranges for the different types? So I wouldn't have that breakdown at the moment, but it's just in the broad category of affordable housing?
Just hypothetically here, if one of the houses costs $700,000, well, any, no idea what an affordable would be?
Not, not at the moment.
That's fine. My other question is, you're saying you're going to have a community meeting in the spring. Do we have a date for that?
We have a tentative date of April 30th.
April 30th?
At the moment.
You know where you're having it?
Potentially at Alice Hall High. We're still working that out.
Okay.
But we're working very closely with the Alice Hall High School District, with the, sorry, with the Salinas High School District and, and the Alice Hall School District as well. So we'll definitely bring them in.
You're saying that Barton Ranch currently is already preparing for this, which is great. Your report says that the Barton Ranch proposal is proceeding through separate approval process. Is that, can other property owners that are interested, I mean, and they, is this like streamlining the process?
So there are, I also, it's tricky to say how many affordable housing units we'll have, because we have so much legislation coming from the state, so a lot of things can change. So this is with SB 330, but, you know, we don't know what else could come up.
And just out of curiosity, with your department at 65 West Alisal, I hope I have the right address.
Correct.
It must be exciting, because I know sometimes we hear we're slow or whatever, but how's the working relationship with this project? Is, is it going according, are, are they pretty satisfied with our service?
It's, well, for me, in my experience, it's, it's very exciting to see that movement. I know we are, everything we hear, and it doesn't matter what community meeting we have, we could be talking about trash cans and we end up talking about housing. So we, we need housing and we need it at all, at all levels. So having interest in any development is very exciting, and we're, the SB 330 process is a little bit new to us and to a lot of jurisdictions, so it is something we're still working through and learning from, from neighboring cities, but we have a very collaborative partner in this developer, and, you know, hopefully all developers could, could be the same.
Now, with your experience, when can we get ready with the shovels?
Ooh, I don't, again, don't want to promise a timeframe, but maybe the developer could, could share a little bit.
Okay.
Soon.
No, this is exciting. This is exciting. Besides the Barton Ranch, is there, and I apologize if I didn't, I didn't hear this, is there other property owners that are just as interested?
We've heard some interest, but not at this kind of scale. We've heard some interest, but not at this kind of scale.
Yeah. Do you think they're just waiting to see what the working relationship would be here?
Well, they're, they're working very closely with us on the plan, and they may just come along with the process. So that's, that one's TBD.
Yeah, TBD. Oh, I like that. Hey, thank, this is exciting. Thank you. I'm eager to hear from Barton Ranch when we're ready.
Okay. Andrew?
Yeah, I know that, I think Hugh Walker mentioned that they're going to be having a community assessment district, something along those lines that cover maintenance and street repair. Is that what you're referring to, that you're still going to do a financial analysis?
Correct. So the current development within the central area specific plan is following the requirements of that, including the maintenance and funding requirements. Since we're still drafting the East Area specific plan, we've just debuted the preferred alternative. The next step over the next several months in the summer is completing fiscal analysis to answer those questions.
Yeah, just because, you know, we have enough issues maintaining our current roads and sidewalks, and so taking on something else is, just seems like a daunting task. The graph, the slide where it showed the proposed area along Baronda Road, there was one that had the Baronda Road. Is there a roundabout planned in that area or along that intersection that was proposed in that plan?
I have to double check, but I believe there is.
There's a second one. Because I didn't see that reflected in the plans, sketches?
That, the plans are, the last visual that I showed, that's from the developer, so they probably did include that.
Okay, and then I know we were struggling to get the funding for our roundabout in McKinnon, and then the, one of the other developers in the west central plan, I'm not sure which plan, they are upfronting the cost of the roundabout. So is, is that, those decisions, I mean, is the conversation now or when will that conversation happen?
Well, part of the, part of the development comes with a lot of those fees, right? And really, this, these areas are very underdeveloped, so getting that infrastructure ready, we'll be able to tell you at the moment the exact details, but the developers play a role in the, in the creation of the infrastructure.
And as we move forward, like, will our next presentation show that, reflect our plans for Baronda Road? Jim, Andrew, sorry, see you.
So I do think they can kind of share the process, but this is a lot of the preliminary work that needs to occur. And as we move through the process, the fiscal analysis, the improvement, the plans, the infrastructure plans, the funding, the financing, you probably end up in a development agreement, all sorts of things are going to be coming through. So it's a little premature right now to even show that, because we're not there yet. And one of the challenges, that when you get too premature, that you set expectations and then things might evolve and change.
Right. Just because Baronda Road, you know, very heavily congested.
Correct. But I think, I think what I've heard from staff is that developers are aware of that. So part of it is, any development is going to be, has to be marketable, right? So we have to work with them on that as well.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that's something we're considering. And then I think there was a agreement, although the city was not part to it, but when they were building, Hugh Walker was building a certain amount of units, he was also building the affordable units, let's say it was 15%. That every, for every 100 units that were built, there was 15 built in that same timeframe as opposed to, you know, maybe not building them at the beginning of the development? Is that a conversation that we could have with the developer? I know that's not necessarily something that can be written, is my understanding with our city attorney, but that way that those affordable units come at the same time as the market rate units come?
So this is more aligned with our inclusionary housing ordinance, correct? So it's following, there are a couple of different options that a developer, or paths a developer can take, and then depending on what those are, the, how that development shapes out.
Right. I always want to make a plug for, you know, that possibility that as we build market rate housing, we're building also simultaneously that affordable housing requirement. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Margaret, did you finish processing?
Yeah, I just had one question. I'm not sure if I misunderstood you, but, because I know this is basically residential build-out. Did you mention something about schools? Did I hear that?
Yes, we have designated space for four schools.
Four schools.
So two elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the call.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead. Okay, we'll open public comment, and if the developer would like to, hold on, the developer will get first call and then, and then the rest of the public, if he would, if he would like the option.
Good evening, council. I'm just here tonight to hear what was going to be presented by staff with regards to the East Area Plan, specific plan. I didn't have a formal presentation here tonight, but I figured I'd introduce myself. I'm Chris Stumpf with Meritage Homes, and I heard a lot of good questions, and I'm taking notes. I want to, you know, get your feedback here tonight. But a lot of these details, as Monica mentioned, are going to be worked out. Really, we're getting into the nuts and bolts of it right now as we speak on this project. We were just deemed complete in the fall, and so we're trying to kick off the SEQA document, which is going to answer a lot of these questions. So a lot more to come, and we're really excited to be working on a partnership here with city staff and really excited about this project in general.
And you have a minute 22 to talk about your philosophy, because when we had a chance to visit, I liked what you had to say, just how you approach working with the community.
Okay, yeah, with respect, this does touch a little bit on the affordability question, Andrew, that you mentioned. But yeah, so Meritage Homes is an entry-level builder. We build quality homes. We've been known for building really sound homes that are energy efficient, being ahead of the curve on energy efficiency. That's been one of our staples, but entry-level homes, and that's something that the, our company basically made a transition over to coming out of the, you know, 2005 recession. And so what we really do is basically making a community like this affordable by design. So when we, we will have 115%, 128 units that are going to be labeled as affordable units in general, but what, what we do in general is just basically those homes will be very close to that price point regardless, even if they're not designated as affordable homes. So yeah, just targeting the entry-level market, I think will make things better for the community and provide the housing that everybody wants to see as efficiently as possible. So, yeah.
Terrific. Thank you. Well, we're glad you're here.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. All right. All right, now you're up.
Yeah, looking at a plan, it seems as if you're building for a community that's not ours. So if you're saying that the people that are going to live in these communities are coming from Silicon Valley, coming from Santa Cruz, then you're not serving our population. If you're doing anything that's going to turn our fields and our agricultural spaces into commercial areas, then what you're doing is you're taking away jobs from the people that are lining up here every day telling you they need housing. So not only are you not going to provide them with the housing they need, but you're going to take away the land that is being used that provides them their jobs. This is short-sighted. It doesn't support our community. We don't need to grow to support outside communities. You guys should be looking for solutions that empower the community that you serve, not some future vision of other people coming in and supporting them and imaginary parks that you don't have budgets for, right? If you have a community, all these people come here every week to tell you that they don't have housing, they don't have jobs. You are serving somebody, but it's not the community of Salinas who are low-income, many of them don't have housing, and you're serving people with money and power, and it's somewhat discriminatory. They have a word that describes how it is that you take away resources from the poor and give to the rich. And that's exactly what you're doing. You're taking the resources that could be used to build, and you're ignoring your community, and again, you're providing opportunities for people that don't come from this community. You need to serve, right? The community, the line of people that are here every week asking you for help.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, mayor, Luis Chagojares. We're building healthy communities, and with respects to the previous comment, we can, we, there are conversations amongst the neighbors, especially amongst the youth, around what, what the future, what Salinas, the futurism of Salinas. One, where there are, there are pathways to careers for children, families that are living in or working in the ag industry today. We can see, we can envision, we can dream up that, that reality together. The one that obviously can access those affordable homes and careers, careers that can, you know, that will pay enough for, for those who can afford, even that, those marketplace, market rate, living spaces. We understand that the growth is, is already, there is already that in place. The, you know, it feels like the train may already have left the station in that sense. And, you know, I just really want to appreciate the comments made, because the reality of our, our community, we're in need of that hope. Our neighbors in need of that hope, that vision. Our youth want to, want to live and want to grow here and raise families here. They shouldn't have to go off to, to university, go off and find a different career and not be able to afford coming back home. This is home. This is where, this is where we all belong. Thank you.
Buenas noches, alcalde y concejalles. Mi nombre es Nidia Soto. Aquí estoy otra vez como residente de la comunidad de Salinas y escuchando la preocupación de nuestra gente de esta ciudad por una vivienda y asegurar que pueden tener en un futuro comprar una vivienda de estas 852 unidades que están por venir en construcción. Realmente nuestra comunidad tiene una esperanza puesta en este proyecto y solamente queremos asegurar que el 15% de estas unidades son para personas que pueden comprar esta vivienda a un precio asequible que vienen siendo alrededor de 128 unidades. Hay muchas familias en Salinas con la esperanza puesta en este proyecto. Entonces queremos pedirle a ustedes como concejales, concilio de la ciudad, que aseguren ese porcentaje para nuestras familias de recursos bajos. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Nidia Soto, and I'm here again as a worried member or of Salinas. I worry about the housing situation. I want to make sure that these houses that are 852 units really have the 15% units that are affordable. The community has a lot of hope in this project. We hope that the 15% units, 15% of the houses that are going to be built, we can have these units. It comes up to 128 units that should be affordable for the families in Salinas. And I really hope that this council makes sure that we save that percentage for the families that are low-income.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council, again. I'd just like to add a couple of comments. I think that this is a, you know, I think that there needs to be a lot of community involvement when it comes to these processes. I'm sure you guys know that, that that's very important to be able to talk about housing and have open conversations about affordability, especially when it comes to young people. You know, I've heard a lot about, I've heard a lot of my friends actually talking about not being able, you know, to maybe in the future, see themselves here just because of the housing market here, you know, talking about going to Texas or Nevada, to other states, just because of, you know, their careers and how much they would make in different places and the housing there, because we know California is a very expensive state. I think there should be a lot of youth involvement to, to kind of let our youth understand that there is a future here in Salinas, that this can be home, and that it should be something very invested in, because that's the people that are going to be the future of Salinas. And I just want to give hope, you know, to young people, to, I hope you guys can give hope to young people and reassure that there is a future for them here, even in this housing market. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around with, those are good comments. Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public?
Hello again. I just wanted, I agree with this young man. I have three grandchildren. One, I'm proud that she's got her masters, and she's a head teacher at Monterey, North Monterey County. I have a grandson who's going to be an attorney, and the youngest one is going, is going to University of Santa Barbara to be a doctor. But they don't want to leave Salinas, but they were telling me about the type, when we bought our homes, to them, it was peanuts. Says now, for us to buy a home, it's going to cost $800,000 and up to buy a house. And this was my grandson, and he was telling me, why should I stay in Salinas? There's not even any jobs here. So, you know, that's something that we need to look into, because we want our kids to graduate. We're teaching them, and we want them to graduate and stay here. They're the ones that are going to lead Salinas. So I agree, going out to the community, the youth, maybe to Hartnell College, doing a presentation to them and get their input, that's very important, because right now they just feel like, uh-uh, we're going to stay with mom and dad for the rest of our lives. If they want to stay, it's Salinas. So we've got to start thinking about that and, you know, think about the, the youth that need, that want to stay here, which is, you know, that's what we want. Thank you.
Beth, thanks, Yolanda. Okay. Anyone else from the public? All right, is anyone on Zoom?
Yes, David Masonow, two minutes.
Yeah, you know, I've, I've been around the whole Monterey County for a long time as a real estate appraiser, looking at, at different developments and things. And one of the biggest challenges I see, and this is, sounds simple, but it's not, is parking. Now, you threw up a map of what you were going to, a proposed development. It looked extremely densely populated, and it looked like, how, where are we going to put all our cars? You go to the east side now, into the newer subdivisions, and it's car after car after car, and if you don't pay attention, you can't even park on the street. So I kind of think there needs to be some maybe overdoing of parking right now. It's just a simple idea. The other thing is, go drive east garrison if you want to have a family-friendly neighborhood, really, really well put together. Anyway, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you, David. All right. Anyone else?
No one else.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is not an item that there will be a vote on, so we simply will come back to council for, for final comments. So since I started over there, Andrew, I'll start with you. Any final comments?
Sure. Well, it was good to hear from the developer. You know, I love an opportunity to meet with you, learn more about your philosophy. It sounds like you have a great approach. I hear the community about trying to provide housing for the people that live here, and just from my perspective, of course, we want to try to find a way to prioritize the residents of Salinas as much as we can, within the law, of course. I'm not interested in being a commuter town for the Silicon Valley, but I definitely hear the concerns of residents and the youth want to live here. And so I like the approach that you have, that you say, you, you know, it'll only be slightly above the affordable housing prices in your approach to the way you're building. So I will look forward to meeting with you and, you know, doing whatever we can to make sure we provide housing for our local residents. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, mayor, thank you. Speaking to the city manager and the city attorney yesterday, I think we met yesterday, yeah. The developer has a, what's the word I'm looking for here? A certain, I don't want to use the word power, but you can leverage, if I understood it correctly, the developer can leverage to put residents first, Salinas residents first to be able to be buyers. I don't know to what extent that, if it's even legal, but I think what I would encourage Barton Ranch, if possible, to give people in Salinas the opportunity to buy these homes. And I think, Ms. Monica, in our spring meeting...
And I think Ms. Monica, in our spring meeting, that maybe something, if, if the Barton Ranch does say something, if it's possible to bring that information to them as well. Because I understand the city can't get involved in that, but I, I think the developer can choose to do something like that if they, if they want to. So I'd like to hear more about that later on. But great, great, I really enjoyed it and I think we're off to a good start. Thank you.
Well, again, echoing the comments, I'm very excited for this project. As a relatively young person myself, I, you know, am really excited, particularly given the developer's mentality, and this is specific to the Barondo Ranch project, right? And philosophy of really making things affordable. If I recall correctly, and don't quote me on this number, but I think the, some of the starter homes were going to be around the $500,000 range, which is still not exactly cheap, but relative to the, you know, medium home prices in our area, this is a much more feasible and viable option for younger people, you know, to go into as a starter home and to, you know, come back from college and exercise their professions around the community that they want to serve. This also really helps address the housing issue, right? Particularly in District One and in East Salinas more so. It's, the issue's compounded where you have multiple families living in one unit and this will definitely help alleviate some of that, whether it's through rentals or through homeownership. Just really looking forward to those opportunities for all of our residents, not just young people, right? And also just wanted to point out, you know, there's still plenty of opportunities for community engagement for the Barondo project itself, right? We're just going through the preliminary application process. The developer has expressed great interest in, you know, engaging the community and ensuring that the project has not only the input, but the buy-in of the community. And would really look forward to, you know, potentially partnering up either with a developer or through a city part program to prepare our community for this upcoming development. And what I mean by that is credit readiness. Preparing yourself regardless of your income level for homeownership, right? How do you achieve that? How do you prepare for that? And to whatever extent the city is able to participate in those kinds of discussions and opportunities to educate the public, would really be excited to see those come to fruition. But overall, thank you for the presentation and just again, really excited for the future development and how this is going to help address the housing crisis in our community. Thank you.
All right, Aurelio and then Margaret.
Sure. Right. I'm going to totally take advantage now that we have the developer here taking, taking notes. You know, as far as like providing some feedback and, you know, listening to what residents have been saying over these last couple of meetings, and having served on the Monterey County Planning Commission for, for 12 years, I've had my opportunity to look at, like plans. Actually, I think I was on the Planning Commission when, when we did have, when we did have the development of East Garrison. I mean, if there's an opportunity to go out there and take a look at East Garrison, it is a very beautiful community. It has a combination of mixed, well, not, not so much mixed use, but affordable housing, right? There was recently the Alfred Diaz and Fuentes apartments that were built. But just the, the mixed homes and units that you, that you would see there, not to mention that I think they probably also have maybe, I don't know, they may have one of the most beautiful parks there, and I'm talking about Lincoln Park. What this council should continue to hear from me as these projects do come before us is I tend to think about, like families, right? And I'm thinking about comments that we've been receiving, right? So when people talk about uneven sidewalks, right? When these projects come to us, right, we know that there's going to be trees planted, right? Want to make sure that that's done right. I mean, over the years I've heard like sometimes we get trees that aren't planted deep enough and that, that, that's what causes, you know, sidewalks to, to uproot. And so as, as these plans come, you know, as they're being designed and come to us for, for final approval, there's some things I want to make sure that, that happen, right? Because there are things at the end, at the end of the day affect the quality of life for like the, you know, the common, common resident. You know, when I take a look at, at Salinas and when, when I, when I take, you know, because I grew up, you know, I grew up in East Salinas, I remember, you know, walking up and down those streets. You know, at the time sidewalks were, it felt like they were probably like three feet wide. It's great if you're just walking by yourself, but if you take a look at the Creek Bridge Neighborhood, I mean, those, we have areas where it almost feels like it's maybe about five or six feet wide. So it's very clear that a family, right, you know, you know, if they're walking with their child or a pet, I mean, there's, there's this room, right? Which I, I think it falls under that built environment design when, when we're taking in consideration like having walkable communities, right? So those are questions that I'm going to continue to, continue, continue to ask. I, I do want to make it clear, I, you know, I was listening to the public comment earlier and so I do want to make it clear, you know, definitely, we're not here to build for Silicon Valley. And, and that was my concern, right? Because I've been watching, you know, I've been watching the boom that happened in South Santa Clara and I'm concerned about, you know, the, the boom that is happening here. And as someone who lives in Salinas and commutes over to Seaside every day, you know, I don't need a traffic impact report to tell you it's bad, right? So anyone that lives in Salinas that makes that commute to Seaside, I mean, you, you can, you can see that, I mean, the traffic, it's got to be level service deep on the way there, eight in the morning. When you take a look at the traffic coming this way, I mean, you know, I might see 200 cars, like all, everybody trying to get to work, but then again, I see like five or 10 coming this way, right? So it's very clear that Salinas is the labor for, you know, we make up the labor force for ag and hospitality. We, as policymakers, as council members, we also have to put the political pressure on the peninsula that they also do their fair share of housing, right? So on the Monterey Planning Commission, when I was on Monterey County Planning Commission, you know, we're constantly advocating for that, right? So we can't continue to have Salinas try to meet all the housing needs, right? We need to house our own first and I'm going to continue to advocate for that. And what I mean by that, it's our farmworker community, right? I want to make sure that we do have those affordable homes. So whatever is within reasonable as a developer, right? Because I understand that everything is a cost for a developer. The other thing that I want to continue to make sure I'm an advocate for is for our teachers, for our nurses, for those that are in the nonprofit sector, those that, those of us that have like those kind of mid-career positions that we also have, you know, those safe vibrant communities and those homes to be able to access and, and purchase. And I think I heard the, the comment about, you know, we lose so many high school students once they go to college, like they don't want to come back to Salinas. I can contest to that myself and about 20 friends from Salinas and Castarbo, we ended up at San Diego State University. Out of my 20 friends, I think I was the only one that came back. Even my cousins stayed there, right? So we have to make sure that we do build that affordable housing. As a developer, sorry to put that, that burden, that burden on you, but as a council, these are the things that we're, that we're looking at. We want to make sure that, you know, again, we do have that farmworker housing, we do have that affordable housing. And that we also have, you know, housing in communities that are, that are environmentally, you know, conscious. And what I mean by that is having like the open space in the parks and the sidewalks. I don't want to pick on the city of Greenfield, but I'm going to do it tonight, only because there was a project in Greenfield that, gosh, I wish you can go and take a, take a look at it. That developer that came in really tried to maximize the amount of space and, and the homes were so close, I mean, there was about four feet between one house and the next, right? So privacy gets lost. And the roads were so narrow with one car on one side of the street, one car on the other, it was so narrow, two cars actually couldn't make it through. And it was poorly designed. So these are the things I also want to make sure that also happen, that we have enough road space that, you know, vehicles can, can pass as well as having that, that middle divide. Now, I know we can't do that with every street, but in terms of the main arteries, I want to make sure that the main arteries can accommodate fire, right? And police that are going to also have to respond to, to those daily calls. And so I, I see that you're taking notes and I appreciate that and gladly accept the email from you later on. But thank you for stepping up to the back and meeting, meeting some of our housing needs and I hope our input will help you guide that process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Aurelio and Margaret.
So I think I, I echo what everyone said so far. Thank you for the report. It sounds like there's a lot more information coming our way, so we'll stay tuned for that. And appreciate the developer sharing his perspective. I also want to thank our, our public comments for making sure that we don't become Silicon Valley or the gateway to, because I don't think that's our intention at all. I think growth is great and exciting, but it's got to be well planned and I do worry about water and, and traffic and those sort of things. So having mitigation steps to make sure that we don't create more of a, you know, congestion that there already is in our city. So thank you for all that, all that information and your comments were very well taken. And I appreciate you speaking up because we do want this to be a city for our people that live here and not for those that live out of the area. So thanks so much.
All right. I'd close with just two, two quick thoughts. First of all, I specifically wanted the prospective developer to talk a little bit about his philosophy. I will not embarrass the gentleman to his right who, who I know well. And I want, and I'm going to preface my comments with nobody is sitting up here going, golly gee whiz, how do we accommodate the Silicon Valley? We, we are very, very interested. We export vegetables and we export way too many of our children. We, we want to put an end to that. And I, I mentioned Warren because he has spent a lifetime making sure our young people have opportunities, whether it's the storm house, the softball complex, the soccer complex, Rabo Bank. And I think it is very encouraging, if I were in a court of law and said, I want some circumstantial evidence of a commitment to our youth, I think his involvement in this project speaks to, he wants a commitment to our youth, that they're going to have a place to live and to grow up and raise their families in this, in this community. So I think that's potentially a great team and it's, it's important and it's great to see good works being done, spirit of cooperation and, and a belief in Salinas. So that's always good. The other thing is it was a, kind of an interesting meeting because I think we heard the future of Salinas framed in terms of what we know we have to do. How do we promote economic growth and opportunity? We, we are very conscious of the quality of life, whether it's attention to detail, our streets, our sidewalks, our parking, or really the critical infrastructure we're going to need to, to make this future possible. And, and then I think the other thing we heard, because Measure G came up, were the ability to provide good customer service, communicate where we are, where we need to go, is going to be absolutely critical to realize this future. So those things really kind of string together. We got to grow, we've got to think about our quality of life today and tomorrow, and we really have to be thinking about customer service and connecting with the community. So, so in many respects, a lengthy council meeting, but I think we, I occasionally have heard along the way, would you guys up there please talk about important stuff? And tonight I think we did. So with that, we're going to come back and see if we can do it again on March 11th. And I think we're good. We have council comments. Oh, that's, I really want to go home. Okay, I apologize, I forgot. Well, I, that's my comment. So if there are any final comments from council and any reports? Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to Police Officer Chris Sandoval. I went on a ride along with him. Great police officer. Also, I visited Fire Station Four. I want to say thank you to Captain Cody Johnson. We also went to the groundbreaking for the new Kinder Center for the Cesar Chavez Elementary. And also this morning, we were at the third anniversary in remembrance of Police Officer J.D. Alvarado. And, and my last thing, right in front of us, Mayor and colleagues, we have Ms. Alexis Mejia. Look what, she's a state certified municipal clerk. And look at, look at the, the letters after her name. She's Alexis Mejia, M.P.A., C.M.C., DDD, whatever that is. So can we just say congratulations? And you know what? She just graduated from that and she's going to stay here. She's going to buy a house over there at Barton Ranch.
There it is. Let's make it happen.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Andrew?
This is the Silicon Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting. We recommend the Alasal School District for the recycling and waste divergence, divergence program. I'll be attending the rail policy meeting and transportation meeting in Monterey County. I want to just remind everyone that, or inform everyone that this Saturday at 2:00 P.M. is going to be the comic book kickoff for Mr. Gabriel Cortez, a resident and native of the city of Salinas. His comic book is Bateman and Rubin and it's based on the city of Siliness. So it's going to be right next to Chucky Cheese, the community, the council's invited. We'll send you guys an invite. And I just want to wish my sister-in-law happy birthday. Happy birthday, Carla.
Thank you, Andrew. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to also attend the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting. Also had my first briefing with the general manager for the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency and also had my first meeting on that. There's some interesting and very crucial issues being addressed on that committee, particularly as it relates to our water security and water supply here in the Salinas Valley. As we see more seawater intrusion permeating closer to Salinas, there's a lot at stake for Salinas, right? In terms of, a lot of this development growth is predicated on having this reliable source of water. So none of the possibilities or, or ways to address this issue come exactly cheap. They're all in the millions and one of them is actually in the billions of dollars. So those are tough discussions and conversations that we're going to have to have over the next year or two to really begin moving the needle on that issue of groundwater sustainability. I also had an opportunity to do some school site visits alongside Salinas Union High School District Superintendent Sandrojo Galván and trustees Natalia Carrillo and Monica Lujan to visit El Salcal and Alasal High Schools. Had an opportunity to meet with the principals, students, teachers, and parents to hear more about what they would like to see the city partner up with them on. Interestingly enough, I was in a seventh grade class, first thing in the morning and the children, the, not children, the, our young people had some interesting, you know, ideas and, you know, perspectives on what they'd like to see collaboration on, right? I don't know what I was expecting from a seventh grade, seventh grader, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning, but they were talking about, I want to know how to purchase a home, right? Like these exact conversations that we just had today, you know, our young people have those top of mind, right? They want to learn how to start their own business. They want a, more engagement with workforce development. They want more economic development. So the same issues that we keep, you know, singing, you know, the same song we keep singing up here and the same comments that we keep getting from the public are also being echoed by our young people. And look forward to collaborating with the district on, you know, helping move the needle on some of those issues and bringing more opportunities for our youth. I also have an upcoming training and orientation tomorrow morning, a lovely five hours for the Central Coast Community Energy Committee, which I'll be serving on. And there's also some neat upcoming events. This Friday is Pink Shirt Day over at Northridge Mall from 4:00 to 7:00 P.M. There's going to be some presentations from the Alasal Unified School District, their folklorical team, their mariachi team, their drum line, there's going to be a book reading. I'll be there with Salinas Valley Pride, so you might, if I'm the highlight of your day, I'm happy to be that for you on Friday evening. And there's also an upcoming Immigration Know Your Rights Forum in the community of Pajaro on Sunday, March 6th. And lastly, this Saturday, February 28th, is the Salinas Union High School District All-District Music Festival. So we'll be having presentations over at Salinas High School at the PAC at 7:00 P.M. They're going to be dividing up all, all the high school bands, the choirs, the performing arts programs are going to be having presentations. So welcome the community to participate and engage in those events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Margaret?
Gosh, Jose, you make me tired. You've got a lot going on over there. Okay, so I will be at the, the bullying prevention event on Friday. Very excited to be there and speak and wear my pink proudly. And I just want to shout out to Jose with the work you're doing for CASP. You're doing amazing things. Every time we get together, there's a whole new group of people that come together and really care about our city and our community. And I think that is just a fabulous organization, so thanks for your leadership on that. And then this week I'll be doing a ride-along with the fire department on Friday night after the bullying prevention. So look forward to getting to know our, our firemen better and learning about what they do on a daily basis and keeping our city safe. And last but not least, I really want to understand how we fill our potholes because District Three is very pothole focused. And everybody keeps complaining about how they're, they're getting their potholes filled, but they're not done properly. So I want to learn about that and how we could do it better and probably not fill them when it's pouring down rain, because that's probably not a good use of our, our dollars. So that's going to be on my goal list for Renee, to do a, a pothole ride-along. And that's all I've got.
Ooh, that sounds brutal. Well, I have nine things. May I, I'm going to ask the clerk for a two-minute timer to see if I can do it. Very quickly, I've been in a couple of back-to-back meetings. I just want to thank city clerk and her staff for setting up some one-on-one meetings with some of our department heads, had the opportunity to meet with our city attorney, our chief of police, fire department, Sam Public Works, David Jacobs, also had an opportunity to meet with our human resources director, Marina, and community development. I hope I'm not forgetting any one. Those of you that, that don't know, I sent an email asking everyone to share a little bit about themselves with me so I can get to know, know their background and just asked what were some of the kind of accomplishments and challenges within their respective department. And there were some interesting themes that I, that I found in those, in those meetings. And so just want to thank all of the department heads for sharing their information with me. I want to thank Sam for the long-range master plan, the two binder. I, I haven't read it since we met, but I will take an opportunity to take a look at that. I would say of all the meetings, the one thing that did stick out the most and one thing I, I want to make sure that we do address is, you know, this concern regarding response type, right? So when I'm hearing that a call to our fire department, what should take four minutes is taking about eight minutes, we need to really address traffic. And then also I, I know, you know, the traffic calming, the bumps are, are having an impact on our fire department in terms of their response, response time. And so it sounds like that might be a little bit muddy, muddy conversations. I'm not the biggest fan of the speed bumps. And I, I, I'm really concerned about that having an impact on the fire department and its response time. Just want to thank everybody for being over at the strategic plan meeting. Once again, that's just kind of our overarching goals as a, as a council. Anyone that has any input, if they weren't able to make it.
You wanted it.
I was joking about that.
You wanted it. I gave it to you.
Oh, I was almost there.
I know.
Lastly, or second to last, you know, we do have our budget coming up and anyone that would like to reach out to me, feel free to do so. And then going back to roundabouts, you know, it's a concern that I've had for quite some time. I don't know if we have like a design review and how that happens when, when there's a proposal for, for a roundabout.
Aurelio, they're giving me this.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll follow up with city manager regarding, and, you know, some concerns and some ideas I have.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I just want to echo what Councilmember Barrera said, attending J.D., the memorials for J.D. Alvarado. Salinas is blessed with really terrific first responders, both police and fire were there. And, and I think we do well to always remember they do a great job of protecting this city. And, and we should all remember J.D. So thank you for, for mentioning that. With that?
Mr. Mayor, can we propose in memory of J.D.
We, we can't. Why don't, why don't we, why don't we take a moment of silence and then, and then we will actually adjourn? Okay, thank you, everyone. Aurelio, this is for you.
Thank you. All right, let's go.